Mission meeting on March 11th, you'll join me in the flag salute.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Ms. Opel, if you'll do the TV coverage announcement and the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV Channel 20 at nine o'clock a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orquega areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at five o'clock p.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Black, if you'll do the status report and the projection report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, good morning. This morning, we have several items. This is way too... Okay. I'll back up. We have several items that we're proposing the Commission continue, including C1 and C2 and regular item number two. And we're going to request that you continue all of those items to April 8th.
You said April 8th as opposed to April 1st a minute ago, you told me? April 8th.
I changed my mind.
So, do we need to pull those items off the consent agenda to continue them?
I think we need to have Jessica read each of them into the record and continue them. C1, I think, just for a little bit of explanation, requires a bit more work by the subcommittee to address. C2, you have a memo indicating that the applicant's not available for the hearing. And item number two, which is the ordinances to deal with freestanding solar, we're struggling with some preemption issues. And so, we want to come to the Commission with the right set of ordinances. So, I expect the ordinances will look substantially different than what are before you right now.
Right. And just so you know, Commissioner Brooks is going to have some questions on item C3, so that will no longer be in the consent calendar. We'll bring it as a regular item.
So, if you want to take care of those continuances now, that would be appropriate, or we can do it at the beginning of your agenda, whichever you prefer.
Ms. Opel, why don't you go ahead and read those. The first item in the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of the County Executive Office to consider case numbers 08RMM6 and 08RVP9, application filed on August 27, 2008, and to accept 01EIR03 as adequate environmental review for case numbers 08RVP9 and 08RMM6 pursuant to Section 15162 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. So, I entertain a motion, do we continue to April the 8th?
I still move. Second.
And just a comment before we take the roll call. As you'll recall, one of the issues that were brought up last time that was a problem with this, with the issue of prevailing wage, come to find out prevailing wage for a landscape maintenance person is $8.59 an hour, which, by the way, really concerned me since the county is paying $17 an hour for that same issue. How we pay almost twice what prevailing wage is is kind of interesting, but that was just for your information. So, Ms...Jessica, do you the roll call, please?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we need to just take public comment?
I'm sorry, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Having no slips, seeing none, do any of the commissioners have any comments? And seeing none, Jessica, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
If you'll read C2 into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Shannon Ferries of Cameron Realty Partners LLC, owner, to consider case number 08TX23, application filed on September 26, 2008, and to accept the addendum to 95EIR001 as adequate environmental review for the project pursuant to Section 15162 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Thank you. Anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item? I have no slips, see no hands. I'll entertain a motion for a continuance to April the...
Move for continuance, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any comments from commissioners? Ms. Opel, if you'll read it.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
Great. So, we'll now wait for C3 until a little later in the report. I do have a public speaker today. This is a time when you can allow to comment on any subject not on today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I could do the projection report first?
I'm sorry, I thought you were right.
It's okay. We do have a couple of things we want to discuss with the Commission. First of all, is to sort of your standard projection report. We won't be meeting next week. We've canceled the meeting of March 18th, so our next meeting will be on April 1st in Santa Barbara. And we have about three items, three hours' worth of items on that day. Then, we will again meet on April 8th, and that will be in Santa Maria again. April 15th, we have slated for our Planning Commission retreat, and we've secured the Lompoc Veterans Hall for the retreat that day. And I did send your Commission a draft agenda and did receive comments from Commissioner Brown asking for a little bit more, or wanting to make sure that the SEQA overview includes a discussion of SEQA exemptions and how we treat single-family residences in particular. And we certainly can accommodate that. And she also asked that we discuss BAR minutes and the level of detail of BAR minutes. I didn't receive any other comments, so I don't know if any of the other commissioners had particular items or ideas that they'd like.
Ms. Black, I didn't receive the draft agenda. Did you send it by email?
Did you?
Could you try again? Or give it to me today, and I'd be glad to give comments.
Sure, we'll get you a copy, too.
Thank you.
Then, we do need to make a couple of decisions either today or at your April 1st meeting, and that would be how long we want this training to be, or how long we want the Planning Commission retreat to be. There is a fairly, depending on how much time you want to spend on training, we could spend quite a lot of time on the training topics, which include SEQA overview, county thresholds, overview of the community plan. So, what I had in my mind is that we could start at 10:00. If you wanted to start earlier, we could start earlier, and spend maybe two hours on the training topics, have lunch, and then spend as long as the Commission desires on the planning tools and department structure, which I think could go much more quickly. But it's up to your Commission.
Is two hours enough? You know, once we get talking, especially if we're going to do it on...I'm just wondering...
Probably...well, it might be quick. I mean, we may want to start at nine and go till noon. It's up to your Commission.
It doesn't make a difference. I'm just thinking that sometimes we tend to go on and on. It's helpful because we...
We can have a cup of coffee and so on. Yeah, maybe 9:30.
Yeah, 9:30.
9:30 works for me. Everybody else agree with 9:30? Great. Don't make a 9:30.
And then, Mr. Chair, we typically do invite the Montecito Planning Commission Chair to attend, and we have invited BAR chairs to attend in the past. I don't know if that's something you want me to extend?
I think it's appropriate. We may want to have them join us at noon rather than at 9:30, and we'll do things that don't involve them first and not waste their time. Everybody agree with that?
I would think the Montecito Planning Commission Chair may want to...
He'd be the whole thing. I'm talking about the BAR chairs.
Sure. Okay. We'll start at 9:30.
Great.
And then, what was the lunch place that you suggested? I can't make promises.
Sissies.
Sissies, okay. Okay. We may need to bring something in rather than go, but we'll see what we can arrange. Okay.
Are we going to discuss the San Inez Valley?
Yes. Okay. So, let me go back to the rest of the projection report, and then we'll talk about that. So, you can see, we have one item continued and scheduled for May 6th. And other than that, later on in the calendar year, your Commission is unscheduled at this time. That's not unusual. We actually put all of the hearing dates on through the end of this fiscal year, just to help with staff's planning in terms of items. So, the next item we want to discuss is continue our discussion of scheduling the hearings for the San Inez Community Plan, and Derek Johnson is here to review that with your Commission. See if we can make some decisions about dates and locations.
Good morning, Commissioner Blau.
Good morning.
And members of the Commission. I am back today to follow up our discussion from your meeting last week. You had asked staff to come back with a schedule of hearings designed around your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on the San Inez Community Plan and proposed final EIR. We have structured a meeting schedule designed to both consider the overview of the plan and followed by opportunities for detailed discussion on topical areas of the plan and final EIR. Essentially, there are five proposed meetings, with the first meeting proposed on April 23rd, which would be an all-day session with the Commission, which would provide an overview of the San Inez Community Plan and final EIR, with a generous amount of time afforded to the public for comment on the overall plan and final EIR. From there, we would break into a series of three meetings that are topically based around largely following the outline of the plan and the structure of the final EIR. We anticipate those to be full-day meetings as well. And then, last would be a meeting where we would wrap in the Commission's comments and public's comments and bring back any amendments to ordinances, resolutions to the FEIR for your final action. I've put a list of dates up there that are largely based upon the availability of the Solvang Veterans Hall. There was some expressed interest in the Commission. It sounded like they have some hearings in the valley. One of the technical issues that your Commission asked me to investigate was the ability to afford remote access either from the county facilities, i.e. Santa Maria and Santa Barbara, should we hold hearings in San Inez. And that was determined to not be really feasible. We did look into remote testimony from San Inez to both Santa Maria and Santa Barbara. There were equal challenges with that as well, as we'd have to take existing systems apart, cannibalize them, and put them temporarily in San Inez. So, that did not turn out to really be an option. So, there we have kind of a tentative schedule. I think it's certainly reasonable. It's not a schedule that, from staff's perspective, that needs to be stuck to. We may find ourselves getting through some issues quicker. We may find some issues taking longer. But just gauging, you know, past Commission reviews of community plans, I think that this is a good structure and approach.
I'm going to make a comment first. I'm not in favor of doing all four meetings in Solvang. For the reasons we discussed last time, issues being having it televised, having the ability to have this kind of a screen up here, other overheads, I think it's rather difficult. What I'm going to propose is that we have the first meeting here in Santa Maria, and that the staff go through the entire list of issues you have here. I don't really understand why we're putting it into four sections. I think we could condense that down to where you could make the presentation in a single meeting. I'd like to propose that we have the second meeting in Solvang for the express purpose of taking public testimony, so that all the people in Solvang have opportunity to testify or to make comments. I'm also going to propose that we extend the typical time we allow for comments, maybe from three minutes to five minutes. And I'm sure there may be some interested individuals who represent larger groups, and we will typically extend them additional time as courtesy. And have a third meeting, which we will perhaps discuss what was learned through the public comment period, sort of get a list of issues and items that we think might be modified in the plan, and decide whether we schedule a fourth or fifth meeting after that third meeting, so we know what kind of workload that we're presenting to ourselves and to the staff. I'd also like to propose that we not, we'll do this on our regular schedule. I think, from what I'm seeing so far, like today's meeting is probably no more than two hours' worth of work, that we'll be able to stay within our regular schedule, regular timeframes, so that we know that this room or Santa Barbara is available to us. And that's what I'm going to propose that we do. So, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners. Mr. Brown, I see your light is lit.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be out of town on the 23rd date, having scheduled the trip, knowing that it was a fourth Wednesday, or whatever date that is that last week.
It's actually a Thursday.
Thursday. Knowing that we weren't going to be meeting that week and thinking that it would be good. So, I'm not going to be here. That doesn't mean the rest of the Commission can't do it, but I...Pardon?
When do you come back?
I'm just gone that week.
Actually, I'm going that week also, so...
Okay. So, I would agree. I think that we need to, while I appreciate staff scheduling all these meetings at the Veterans Hall, I think I would prefer to see, as Commissioner Blau indicated, one here, maybe one in Santa Barbara, one in Solvang. I'm not sure what's really convenient for the people in the valley, where I think they're sort of midway in between, but I would prefer, I think, that, because then people, if they're interested, can actually watch it on TV. If they're able to make comment in their own community, then that's, I think, that's a good thing. So, I'm...I'd be interested in what other people are hearing, but I'm not going to be here the 23rd.
Commissioner Brooks? I think we'll talk about the basic structure first. We'll get the dates second, if that's okay, because we'll poll everybody for dates, and we'll do it real quick, like. But go ahead, Commissioner Brooks.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Blau. I want to thank staff for developing the schedule and putting all the time and effort into possibly accommodating the community of the San Inez Valley, you know, and having the hearings in that centralized location. I thought that staff went out, and I had seen a draft before that. I had not seen this particular one. And I know that there were some accommodations going on for different people's schedules. I'm going to appeal to my colleagues that we have, you know, if not all the meetings in the Solvang area, so that the community can be actively involved in this process. And I guess that's the basic point where I'm going to start from. I know, as the Third District Planning Commissioner, I'm learning about distances. And even going over to see Supervisor Farr, you know, in Solvang takes me about 35 minutes, you know, from my area. I believe that, looking at the documentation, we know that the San Inez Valley community has been very involved. This is one of probably six documents. I have the rest of the documentation for the community plan. It's just, it's taken, I think we're nine years, you know, into the process. I want to see this, you know, brought to conclusion in a very timely fashion. And I also say that from the point of view from a community that we're waiting. There are other communities in the wings waiting for this process to end. Again, I think that what staff has developed here is a wonderful process. The process is very important to get the public involved, and I like to see us, you know, working toward this as much as possible. Precedent setting, as far as people, I think the idea that you have come up with as far as telecommunications, you know, that people outside that community, you know, still can be, you know, very much involved. We did hear last week, a member of the public mentioned that some of the people in this community don't have access to cable, so they would, you know, want to physically come and give testimony. That's where I am now. I'm, you know, certainly would like to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Blau. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, I indicated that I thought that we should have the meetings in San Inez, but I understand there's problems and so on. The 23rd is a bad day for me, so is the 21st and the 4th of June. The 13th of May is good because it's on a Wednesday.
I think we'll get the dates on Wednesdays, Joe, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so...but I don't have any problem with the discretion of the Chair. I think the Chair really needs to have discretion here and help set up the meetings. He's already given consideration to the people in the solving area by having one with only hearings and extending the time to five minutes, so that everybody gets a chance to speak, and especially those groups that might be representing various factions would get additional time. So, I think that's perfect. I like that part. So, those are my comments, Mr. Chair. But basically, my discretion rests with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Just a plea that whatever date we take, we get all the documents, and we have them in enough time that we can at least peruse them. There's quite a...
Mr. Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would say at the outset that I think this process is extremely important, and I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Brooks' concern that the public have the maximum opportunity for input. It is, after all, the community's plan, and we know less about it at this time than many people in the community. So, the series of hearings, I think, is not extra ambitious. I think it is going to take some time, once we dig into the details. I don't have a problem with your suggestion that we go through the entire plan the first meeting. However, I think it will be superficial, and even if we dig in with questions, it'll take a considerable amount of time to do that, but that may be a good way to do it. Then, the issue of trying to decide the entire thing in a few meetings, I do think we have a balance between how much time is taken and the time period within which it occurs. This is a relatively aggressive two-month schedule, and I think if that's realistic, I support staff in that. I think we would like to get it done in a relatively short amount of time, so that we don't get into the summer period when people are really tied up with their vacations. So, aiming toward the public, and as I said last time, I am concerned about the part of the public that watches our proceedings on television that would be disenfranchised by hearings in Solvang. I think it's good to have the public comment hearing in Solvang. I'm wondering if we shouldn't also have the initial hearing where staff goes through the entire process, so that the people of the valley hear staff's presentation and are in a position to focus their comments on staff's presentation and the Commission's questions about the plan at the first hearing. Then, in terms of the workout, the subsequent meetings where we're going through the elements of it, I think that segment of the population that really wants to work with us on that hand-in-hand would not be terribly inconvenient by coming to one of the other venues, one of the venues equipped for Planning Commission meetings. And then, Commissioner Blau, you had a proposal at the end that I was concerned about. I really think that, you know, trying to get this all done in the scope of our regular meeting schedule is going to be impossible. We'll have little bits at the end of meetings. We really need to set aside whatever days we do for just the San Inez Community Plan, and we'll have to obviously work on specific dates to get them done. But even if we pick a date that we otherwise would cancel our meeting, so it's a regular Wednesday, I think that's fine. We just need to dedicate those days to the hearing, except perhaps in the end, when we're making our final decisions, it might only take a half a day, and we can schedule it that way. Those are my comments.
Great. Commissioner Brown?
Just the question about the public's being able to view this, I think it's, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but people can only see this public broadcast on the South Coast because it's run by Cox. Does it come through Comcast? It does, yes.
I was also going to comment. I have a similar question for staff, too. I mean, these hearings are available to me by DVD. Does the public have the ability to get the DVDs?
Right.
Commissioner Blau and Commissioner Brown, when the hearings would be held in the San Inez Valley, they would be recorded?
Right.
And so, then, they would be then later broadcast on...
My question is, the first one, when we actually lay the plan out, and I'm going to...and what's the typical charge for that?
DVDs are, in fact, we could make those available. I would defer to Ms. Opel and Ms. Black for the cost.
Mr. Chair, I believe the cost to produce them is about $16.
Man, I don't know how, but...
Wow.
Well, the reality was, I think, I mean, go ahead.
If your question was, Mr. Chair, if we hold the hearings in either this hearing room or the Santa Barbara hearing room, are they live broadcast throughout north and south? Yes, if you have cable?
Okay. So, they're on Comcast?
Yes.
Okay. All right, fine.
And the issue is, is if someone, I mean, I'd like to look into the idea of maybe making the CDs available for like a dollar, the cost of the CD itself, for this particular hearing. I mean, the reality is, in order to do a proper job of taping the meetings if they were all in Solvang, it would probably be way more expensive to the county than it is to get CDs available to the public that wants them.
Mr. Chair, we can also post on the web, so people could go on the website, and they could just pull it down.
See, that'd be perfect.
Similar to the board hearings.
That's even better.
So, then, there would be no cost.
Okay.
But obviously, they can't watch them live necessarily.
They'd be fine if they could do it from...
Okay, great. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Blau. I would like to agree with Commissioner Cooney's comment about dedicating, you know, full meetings to this. I know, just from my early experiences now on the Commission, sometimes, you know, items, especially at the end of the day, seem to get pushed, you know, pushed on. So, I think, just looking at the individual items that we'll be plowing through according to the schedule, you know, we would need, and I would hope that we would have, you know, full meetings dedicated to that study. Someone commented just earlier that this could, if we do it, you know, correctly, depending on how much public comment we have, we have five meetings proposed up here. This could go longer. My question to staff would be, if we decide, you know, just to have a few meetings in Solvang, and the hearings go on and on, let's say they go from five, they go to 10.
Well, let me jump in and just say this. I'd like to schedule the first three meetings now with the Commission, and then we'll decide after the third meeting, then I think the remainder of the schedule. We'll have a much better idea as to what the length of time and the scope will... We'll have a much better idea as to what the length of time and the scope of work is going to be. So I'm going to propose-
I just would like to finish my comment, if I may, on this one. If it ends up that we do have more, let's say than five meetings, and then we decide, you know, not to have more than two, you know, in solving, you know, at what point, if there are additional meetings, do we go, could we go back to solving if we decided?
And I think we'll make the decision at the third meeting.
Okay.
So I think the first three, we can schedule now, they're going to be, my point of proposal that we do the first meeting on the 29th, if there's no objection.
Mr. Chair, that is, the 29th's a Wednesday.
Correct.
And I know there's a need for the commission to not meet on Tuesdays or Thursdays if we want to have a full commission.
Is the 29th, is that, that's the fifth Wednesday, so there's no meeting, right?
That's the fifth Wednesday, so that's perfect.
So we're not conflicting with Montecito, correct?
No.
Okay, I'm going to propose that we do-
Is that April 29th?
April 29th.
I'm not here.
You're not, oh.
Are you not here for the week?
I've gone for the week.
If we moved it up to the 15th, does that work, or is that too soon for staff?
April 15th is too soon. We're looking to have the EIR out, available to the public, and have materials of the commission, you know, at least three weeks out so that you have ample time to review it.
Okay, let me ask this. If we did it, if we did it May the 6th, and we do that one in Santa Maria, we would, we could do, and have the regular meeting on the 13th in Santa Maria, do the regular meeting in Santa Barbara on the 20th, and do solving the 22nd.
Can you, Mr. Chair, could you repeat that again?
Yeah, the first meeting would be the 6th of May. Have the second meeting in San Ines on the 27th of May.
Does that work, Derek?
Mr. Chairman, the solving vet's hall is not available that day. There's some constraints on when that facility is available.
Is it available typically on Wednesday, or not available on Wednesday?
Typically, the next date after-
May 25th.
Is the 3rd of June.
Mr. Chair, it is available on May 25th, which is a Monday, which would work, I think.
Which is Memorial, which is Memorial Day, it's a holiday.
Oh, that's right.
That's why I brought my calendar this time, so not yours.
We went through this.
Mr. Chair, you've probably heard from everybody what days are good for everybody. All Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays are good for me.
Commissioner Brooks, you are back when?
May 1st. And here for the summer.
Any objection doing the solving meeting May the 1st, excuse me, June 1st? You said you're back May the 1st? No, I was talking about May 27th.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you're here May 27th? The first meeting is, would be the 6th of May. The second meeting in solving would be, I'm proposing maybe the 20th or the 27th.
Mr. Chair, I think we're going about this a little bit backwards. I'm going to hand you my calendar that says when the solving vet center is available, because it's not available very often.
Okay.
So there's May.
Can we do some work on this offline?
We can.
Yeah, you know what? Let's, yeah.
So maybe what we ought to do, Mr. Chair, is just find out if any other, I understand, Commissioner Valencia's constraint, I understand Commissioner Brooks, if you've told me all of your vacations were good, I have not heard yours, and I've not heard your dates for availability versus not. And then maybe Derek and I can, at a break, try and figure this out and come back at the end of the meeting.
That'd be great. Let's do that.
But can I hear your dates?
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Great, so we are now done with the projection report? I'll give you mine, so you know what dates are not available for me. Okay, we're done with the projection report. Now, we're going to go to public comment. And I'll repeat myself, this is the time when we're allowed three minutes to speak on any item, not on today's agenda. And I do have one slip from Mr. Haas.
And this goes with Mr. Haas's testimony.
Mr. Haas, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Frank Haas. I want to mention to Commissioner Blau, I want to thank you, Mrs. Brooks, to work with the general plan. And I hope the nine years is the end, or nine will be the end of this plan. It's too costly, it's not efficient, we have people speaking up, which I have no property in this area, which against progress, we need progress modified, and please approve this plan this year. I would recommend it, and I ask all the commissioners to support Mrs. Brooks. If she is fair, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Great. Now, we will go to commissioners' initial reports. I see no lights, so we'll go to Planning and Development Divisional Briefings. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, we don't have any briefings today.
Okay, do we have a director's report today?
The director is not here, he's skiing, which is nice, doesn't go on vacation often enough. And I just wanted to point out that the department's work program is at the board next Tuesday. No, the board did not meet yesterday, so that's all I had to report.
That's why I found no agenda posted on the website.
Right, they did cancel that meeting.
Okay, great. All right, in that case, we can go to item C3, if I'm correct. Ms. Opel, if you read that into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Ron Carlantini, Office of Real Estate Services' General Services Department, to consider case number 09GOV3, application filed on February 9th, 2009, for a determination that the vacation of an unused county right-of-way is consistent with the County of Santa Barbara Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Government Code Section 65402A.
Great, we have a staff report.
Good morning, commissioners. The project before you is for a two-foot vacation to allow an existing structure, which is currently located approximately 10 inches within the right-of-way, to be outside of the county's right-of-way. I do have Harrison Hale available remotely to discuss any detailed information with regards to the vacation. Staff also has three minor corrections. Because the property is addressed off of Tavola, it is a through lot, so the actual vacation will be off of Camino Aurora and not Tavola Street, as originally stated in the memo. And I believe the commissioners did receive a corrected memo to that effect.
Thank you. Well, I'll now take ex parte and site visits. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the site.
Commissioner Cooney?
I did as also.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I did visit the site.
Great, thank you. Now, do we have any questions of staff from the commission? I'll do public comment after that. Commissioner Brooks?
Okay, thank you, Chair Blau. I did visit the site, and what I was concerned about is some of the homes on this Camino Aurora, which is the unmaintained road, where we're looking for the vacation. There's a house directly across the street that has its front entry on that unmaintained road. I didn't quite understand that. I assumed it was, you know, backing off, there would not be front entries. But there's, I think, more than the one home had their front entry and front access on that unmaintained road. Could you explain that for me?
Chairman-
Go ahead.
Chairman Blau, Commissioner Brooks, within the San Ines Valley, we do have a number of homes that are located on Camino Aurora. A lot of them are addressed off of Camino Aurora and then back up to another property. We've had numerous abandonments on this street. Perhaps Harrison Hale can address the issues with the abandonments that happen on that particular road. But that's not uncommon to see a front door on Camino Aurora and it be the backyard. And in this instance, it's because it would be what we consider a through lot. So this particular parcel is addressed off of Tavola, but can go all the way through to Camino Aurora. And that is where the structure has been located for a number of years. It's not a living unit, it's a garage structure.
So in the past, there have been other areas on that road vacated. Because I did see a pad, a concrete pad, that has, I believe, a truck parked on it. It seemed to be out into, you know, the right-of-way there. What else did I see? There was a horse trailer parked, you know, what I would consider out, if that is somebody's, you know, front road, it was kind of parked, you know, right in the accessway. It was confusing to me.
That could be correct. As far as the number of road abandonments that have taken place in this general area, I would have to defer to real properties to see if they have a count on that.
Chairman Blau?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks, Harrison Hale, real property. And I'm not aware of any road vacations that have been done recently on Camino Aurora. There may have been, we could look into that for, if you wanted to continue the item. What you may be seeing there is just sort of unpermitted encroachments into the right-of-way. I seem to recall, there may be, maybe a few years ago, there may have been an abandonment, one or two feet along Camino Aurora, but I'd have to look into that. And then, further down the street, it's possible that there may have been sort of a large-scale vacation of Camino Aurora. But what you're probably seeing in that immediate area is some, just unpermitted encroachments into the right-of-way, rather than the result of road vacations along that street.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
Mr. Hale, what is the county's plans for this road?
Right now, there's, the Public Works Department has no plans for that road to install any improvements whatsoever.
Okay, so likely in the long term, it'll just be maintained the way it is? Or just kept the way it is?
I mean, you know, I don't know how long-term you want to go out, but yeah, for the, for a fairly long period of time, there's no plans to do anything whatsoever.
And it's been like this for years, many years?
Yeah, I mean, I would guess, you know, since the town of San Ines first was built.
Thank you.
Seeing no more lights on now, ask if there's anybody from the public that wants to comment on this item? Seeing no hands and no slips, so now close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for deliberations and questions.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm ready to move forward on this request.
This is a third Superwatal District item. Commissioner Brooks, do you wish to make the motion?
As I said, after my visit, I was a bit concerned, and I did, I was interested to hear that the county at this time has no plans for, you know, any improvements on the road. It's certainly rutted, with the families have to use this, you know, as their main access. You know, if nothing else has been abandoned, it seems that some work needs to be done. But I think I'll probably learn more about these types of roads and accessways as I, you know, look thoroughly through the San Ines Valley Community Plan, because I saw many problems, you know, with this particular access. I think, you know, I'll honor what my colleagues have to say on it, they probably have, you know, more experience on that. I would, yeah, I don't think I'm ready to make the motion at this time.
Commissioner Brooks, maybe I could make the recommendation to you that we continue to get input from Public Works to get a better understanding of, perhaps, of what their plans are in the future for this? That would be of help.
I'm going to suggest that we do continue it. I didn't do a site visit, because I don't normally do site visits on consent items, but it seems to me that what we don't know today is whether or not this is a prime access for some of the residents along that street. And maybe, it sounds like it's not their only access, but we certainly wouldn't want to be abandoning the road and then denying access to someone's lot. So if Ms. Black will help me with a date, I'll propose for continuance.
Mr. Chair, this is a 65402 determination, and is supposed to be heard within 40 days. So I don't think we have a continuance date that would allow the matter to be heard within 40 days. If Ron's available in Santa Barbara, maybe he can address whether or not the, pardon, Carlantini, yes.
Commissioner Blau and Commissioner Brooks, Ron Carlantini isn't available right now, but what I can add, which might, which might help in your decision, is that the portion of right-of-way that we're proposing for vacation here is a two-foot strip of right-of-way.
So you're telling me we're not denying access along the rest of the road to anybody, is that correct?
That's right. So currently, the right-of-way on this street is 55 feet in width, and which is, which is a pretty wide right-of-way. The vacation of this two-foot wide strip abutting solely this one property where the historic barn structure is located, would still leave even 53 feet in front of that property. The rest of the street would remain to be 55 feet. So any, any future plans, when we, when I spoke to the Public Works Department about this, they didn't feel that, that the vacation of this little strip of right-of-way would impair any future plans to improve the street. They might, in the future, you know, have a little bump out for the, for the right-of-way, or, sorry, for the historical barn structure. If they decided to build the entire 55 street and fill it, 55 foot of right-of-way with street improvements, they'd still be able to sort of accommodate that, that historical barn structure. So maybe that helps a little bit.
That does, thank you. Commissioner Brooks, you have further questions?
Thank you for that comment. That does clarify it a bit. And I do remember, they were talking about two feet, 10 inches, it's so minor, and the structure, the historic structure, you know, does come, you know, right up to that point. Maybe what I was bothered by now, that it's been clarified for me, that what I was looking at, I was so concerned about, were maybe just zoning violations or variances versus, you know, the abandonment of, you know, the small part of the road that you're looking at. So maybe if Public Works, if somebody goes back there and examines more carefully what is going on in that area, what we do today, you know, wouldn't affect that at all. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, are you prepared to make the motion, or do you feel uncomfortable in doing it? The easiest way is just move the staff recommendations, is the easiest way to do it.
Okay, then I am prepared to make that motion, that we move the staff recommendation for the abandonment. We determined the proposed road vacation is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that we transmit the consistency report required by Government Code 65402 to Mr. Carlantini.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the commission? Seeing no lights, Ms. Opel, if you would.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I think there just needs to be a correction in the staff report concerning this street. Okay, got it, okay.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Phil Carriese, 50.
Thank you. Do we need a break for our next item? For setup? We're ready to go? Pardon?
If we could just take a few minutes.
Sure, take a five-minute break, yeah. Listen, we're going to get back to this issue of scheduling the first couple of meetings for the San Ines Community Plan. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, so I believe the first hearing date would be, we're proposing would be May 4th, which is a Monday. And that would be in this hearing room. And then the second-
And then the second meeting would be, as Derek had on the schedule, May 13th, which is a Wednesday, at the Solving Veterans Hall. And then I just asked the commission to keep May 20th on your calendar as a potential North County date, and we'll see how things work.
So which will be the first one again?
May 4th, which is a Monday.
Fourth and 13th, okay.
Right, and then we'll come back on, at your next meeting on June 1st, or April 1st, and try and come up with a couple more dates.
Okay, I won't be able to participate next week. It's Tuesday. No, it's Monday, Joe.
It's a Monday. It's a Monday. That's why we selected it.
Oh, I'm a year ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. May 4th is a Monday, so.
Two thousand and two.
Will that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. So we have those dates scheduled, ready to go.
Perfect.
All right, back to the Perez appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Art Perez to consider case number 08APL27, application filed on June 30th, 2008, to consider the appeal of the director's decision to approve a land use permit, case number 08LUP321, to validate, one, a change of use from permitted second-story storage to a bedroom with bathroom and living room with a wet bar area, no cooking facilities allowed, and, two, interior remodel on first floor of 310 square feet to create a bedroom from the rear portion of the garage in compliance with Chapter 35.102 of the County Land Use and Development Code.
Thank you. Now, I ask my commissioners for ex parte communications and site visits. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the site.
Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, I drove by the site this morning. I couldn't see behind the house, so it was only partially useful, but that's all I did.
And I also did a site visit, drove by the front of it. We have the staff report. Ms. McCurdy.
Good morning, Chairman Blau, commissioners. My presentation will take about five minutes, and there are some corrections to the staff report, and they are summarized in the memo you received this morning. And I'll summarize those changes at the end of this PowerPoint presentation. This case is an appeal of Planning and Development's approval of a land use permit to validate work done without permits at the single-family dwelling at 240 Stansbury Drive in Orchid. You can see the house is about two blocks west of Highway 135, and it's on the very southern portion and outside of the Fox and Woods subdivision in Orchid. The subject parcel is .23 acres, about 10,018 square feet in size. The land use designation is residential, 3.3 dwelling units per acre. It's zoned 10R1, single-family residential, 10,000-square-foot minimum parcel size, and is surrounded by residential uses. The parcel in question is right here, outlined in yellow on the slide. Before the applicant purchased this home, a second-floor storage area was added with Later, some interior and exterior remodeling work was done without permits. The unpermitted work involved conversion of the second-floor storage space to a bedroom, bathroom, living room, and kitchen, and conversion of the back portion of the garage into a separate room. A zoning violation was filed on the property in November of 2007, and the applicants bought the home in December of 2007. When they became aware of the violation, they applied for a land use permit to resolve these issues and clear the violation. The land use permit to correct the zoning violation was approved by Planning and Development in June of 2008, and this slide lists the elements of the approved project as we've Planning and Development's approval of the permit was appealed by the neighbors, who objected to the conversion of garage and storage space to living space and the associated loss of privacy from exterior doors and stairs. The appellants are most concerned about privacy, since the stair landing looks directly into their yard, and they also object to the proposed garage side door, which is opposite a fence from their home. The appellants do understand that all the elements of this project are allowable under the Land Use and Development Code, and that the land use permit resolves the zoning violation, but they do still wish to pursue the appeal. During preparation of the staff report for the appeal, the owners expressed willingness to remove the exterior stairs and door in response to the appellant's concerns. However, after distribution of the staff report, the owners changed their minds and wished to keep the stairs, and nothing in the ordinance would actually require the removal of the exterior stairs and door. They did, however, go ahead and remove the railing that was located right here, that created a patio from the roof of the porch. That railing would have been permissible, but the applicants chose to remove it to address the concerns of the neighbors about privacy. In summary, the land use permit meets all the requirements of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, including those for height, setbacks, and parking. And staff recommends that your commission adopt the findings for approval of the case, included as Attachment A of your memorandum dated yesterday, including sequoia findings, accept the notice of exemption pursuant to sequel section 15301A, and deny the appeal, thereby upholding the Planning and Development's approval and granting de novo approval of the land use permit, subject to the conditions in the land use permit that's been revised, that's Attachment C of your memo. I do have additional slides available, should you have questions, but this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the staff from the commission? Commissioner Brown?
A question, you didn't exactly address it, but the question I have is about this unpermitted railing over this deck. Now, the question is, was this deck permitted? Was this covering over the porch permitted?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the roof over the porch was permitted. Subsequent to that, there was a railing that was placed around the exterior of that roof that created a second-floor deck. That would have been permissible, however, the applicants decided to remove it instead.
The question is, is this deck with now the no railing, is it structurally sound to be used as a deck? Because if it's a deck, people can store stuff, they can be up there, have dancing parties, and so on and so forth.
Without looking at the engineering, I don't know if the deck itself is structurally sound, but right now, it's not permitted as a deck, and there's no access to it as a deck. There's no access from the interior of the house to it.
No, but is there not, I can't see, there's a...
Right here, there's a fence that prevents people from coming out this door and going out here.
But fences can be removed, can they not? Okay. So the question now also for you is, excuse me, the applicants have changed their mind about the exterior stairs, so I'm somewhat confused about what we're, if we are to either deny, if we are to, as you recommend, deny the appeal, that means the stairs go. The stairs would be removed.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the revised, the memo that you received this morning has a revised staff report.
Okay, fine.
I mean, a revised land use permit that would permit all the unpermitted development and would retain the stairs.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You didn't give us a total square footage of the house now and later when it's converted. Do you have that?
I have information on the square footage of the house, but the footprint would not change. So there's no actual new construction. The construction is...
The envelope would stay the same.
Exactly.
What is the total square footage?
I'm going to look at the plans to find that out. It's about 1,300 square foot footprint with an additional footprint on the second floor of living space.
That's good enough. And then bedroom number four, that's downstairs, doesn't have a bathroom, does it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, that is correct. That bedroom is connected to the living room through a throughway, and it would use the same bathroom as the other bedrooms on the right side of the house.
Bedroom one, two, and three, it would come around to use that.
That's correct.
And then the new one on top will have a new bathroom then?
That's correct.
Let me see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we'll hear from the applicant, excuse me, the appellant. Do they have a presentation?
My name is Art Perez, and I live next door to the Ramiras. They are new neighbors. I'm sorry it had to be this way. I know that they did not know the problems that we were having in the neighborhood with that house. It's unfortunate that I really never even personally met them. I'm sure they're good people. I've had about six, seven neighbors living in that house prior to the Ramiras, and they always go up on that deck, and you can see I'm standing pretty much in the back corner of my property, where I have a bunch of fruit trees along the edge, and they can look straight into our properties as long as the, as well as the houses behind us, and look into the patio area that I have there. I used to have quite a few canaries and parakeets in there, and they would always go up, look down, and say, oh, you know, I like your birds, I like the way they sound. But there's no privacy. There's, my grandchildren come over, and there were a bunch of males that would be staring at my children, my grandchildren. And once they vacated, the house became an REO. Once it had vacated, they, the real estate agents came up to me and told me if I was interested in purchasing the property. They told me that it was a studio downstairs with permits, and that there was a one-bedroom apartment upstairs with permits, as well as a three-bedroom house. The prior neighbors, the people before them, there were fights in the street in the front. There were beer bottles thrown, there were girl fights out in the front street. The neighbors upstairs and the neighbors downstairs were fighting in their driveway more than once. We could see this. That is one picture. There's a few more pictures. Again, I have no problem with the neighbors. I've never really spoken with them, although I thought that the young gentleman sitting here was the owner. Other than that, I really never knew that the father was the owner of the house. But there's the back portion of the house, and there is the little gate that'll walk over the railing and get on that deck. I spoke to the county about this property also, and there's electrical wires that go across the balcony. So it's just a little bit out of the picture there, but when they were up there, you had to walk over the power cords, which is right there by the chimney. That was illegal. They said you can't have that up there because of the power, and they would not, PG&E would not move the meter box to the side of the house or anyplace. That's what PG&E told me. I was thinking of purchasing the house for my daughter, but, and I had made an offer on the house until, of course, it was knocked out. There's also the question of the parking. It's been a few occasions where their parking is actually on the sidewalk. And again, where they're actually parked in that car, there used to be a berm there, and there used to be a wooden fence. So one day I came home from work, and they had taken the fence all down, and it used to be a lap over the top, so that there was a little privacy as far as the front yard goes, where they couldn't look over at us walking out our front door. And again, the previous owners removed that lap. So now that even in the front, there's, if I walk out my door, you look to the left, I'm looking right at them, or they're looking right at me. The young man here in the courtroom today, I was in my backyard picking some fruit, and I left on a service call, and he went up and told, he went and knocked on my door, and talked to my wife, and said that I was violating their privacy, because I was looking up onto their porch while, apparently it was his wife that was up there, and I violated his privacy by looking up to see that there was a person up there.
Commissioner Brown has a question for you, I believe, Mr. Perez.
Mr. Perez, you've lived in your house for quite a while?
Six, seven years.
Okay. Do you know if this house was originally a single-story house?
It was, it always had the upstairs on there.
Okay, so it was an origi, so the house, when it was originally built, was a two-story house?
No.
No, okay. So this bedroom, or this addition in the back, was added?
Yes.
Okay, so the original tract was a one-story house without any two stories?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Again, that issue of him talking, speaking with my wife brought up a concern to me, since I'm his next-door neighbor. Also, here's, I think there's two more pictures here. This, where they proposed, where they proposed to put the door on the side, that was, the removing of the staircase and the removing of the back door was great. I thank them for saying yes that they would do that. My only concern was the side where they wanted to put their door. If you're looking from their property over to mine, it's eye level into my kitchen door. And they're using, the young man was using the, that's looking right at my door right there. The young man was using that as an entrance, as his entrance in and out of his back room, I guess we could call it. So everything else was fine. I just said, you know, tell them not to put the door on the side for the privacy issues. If we're going to be, if he's going to be complaining about his privacy issues against our privacy issues, well, just don't put the door on the side. You've already agreed to remove the balcony and the upstairs door. That would be fine. So that's pretty much all I have to say right now.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Valencia has a question.
Mr. Perez, would you just hold there? So the door that you're complaining about is about the one that's on bedroom, next to bedroom four, that comes out of bedroom four?
Yeah, it would be the new proposed door on the bottom.
And when he comes out of there, you can see straight into your kitchen?
Well, I don't actually know exactly where the door is going to be, but...
There's a door there now?
No, that, the side door that they proposed.
This is a proposed door?
Yes.
Okay, that clarifies that. There is no door now.
Ms. McCurdy, is that door from the garage or from the bedroom behind the garage? I understood it to be from the garage in your staff report.
Chairman Blau, the... Chairman Blau, the door is a new door that would be put right here in between the garage and the bedroom.
So it's access from the living room, basically? Am I correct?
No, it's access from the garage, so that, for instance, if you had a lawnmower in your garage, it would be the only way you could get it to the backyard without taking it through the house.
Okay, so my question was, the door is from the garage, not from the bedroom, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
That was my question. Thank you.
I thought so.
They had an original door from the garage on the backside. That was the backside of that picture. There is a door right now, but I was there when they were building that bedroom downstairs. So they did have full access to the back of the house before they proposed this new bedroom downstairs.
The upstairs, Mr. Chair, if I can continue?
Please.
The upstairs, was that built when you moved there, or that was built after you moved there?
That was already built.
That was already, when you moved to your house, that was already built? They had, the previous owners had illegally built that?
Correct.
No, it had been legally built?
Commissioner Valencia, I think what the staff report indicated was the two-story was done with permit, was done with...
The conversion?
No, it was the conversion afterwards, correct.
Okay, that's, okay.
The two-story portion was permitted. The two-story portion was permitted and is a, built with permit, right?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
The door to the garage, is that required by fire code or something? I know in my 60s tract house, I have a door to the garage that goes out to the side yard. I'm just wondering, is that something that's required?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, that door is not required.
Okay, so I can have a garage without a door in it?
You can.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, would I need to, if this were my house and I had a, a door in the garage like that, would I need to permit to put a door from the garage to the bedroom?
Actually, you can't put a door from a garage to a bedroom, if you want, to tell you the truth. That is actually code violation.
Yeah, but wait a minute, but I could do that. I could do that if I just wanted to do it. It may be a code violation, but I still could do it. I could physically do it.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, you could physically do lots of things you're not allowed to do by code.
I understand that.
But you would, we would not issue, a permit would be required to request that, but we would not issue one.
Okay, okay, that's distinction, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant if they wish to speak.
Mr. Chair, Latisha Rodriguez is going to translate.
Great, thank you.
Gracias de comisionado, comisarios. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Raoul Ramirez. Yo este vivo en el 240 Stanbury Drive, Santa Maria. Yo compré la casa en fecha 12/6/2007. Yo compré la casa así como está y no sabía que no tenía permisos. Y cuando me di cuenta que no tenía permisos, fui al condado a empezar el proceso para el permiso. Yo entiendo que los vecinos están preocupados que va a haber mucha familia viviendo en la casa y que habrá problemas en los parqueaderos afuera. Pero nosotros somos una familia, mi hijo y su esposa y su hijo, mi hija, mi esposa. Como ven, la familia no es muy grande y tenemos cuatro carros, dos dentro del garage y dos enfrente del garage. Como ven, no hay por qué preocuparse por el parqueadero.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Good mor, good morning, my name is Raoul Ramirez and I live at 240 Stansberry Drive in Santa Maria, California. I bought this house on December 6, 2007. And when I bought the house as is, and at the time I did not know that I did not have permits. When I found out that there were, there was no permits, I went over to the county office and I started the permit process. I understand that my neighbors are worried about the, the members, the number of members of family that would live in the house and also parking problems. But our family only consists of myself, my wife, my son, his wife, and my grandson. And as you can see, my family is not that large. We have four, a total of four cars, vehicles, two which are stored in the garage and two which are usually parked in front of our driveway.
Yo tengo más de un año viviendo en esta casa y nunca he tenido problemas con ningún vecino alrededor de la casa. Y como les dije, mis carros siempre están arriba. Y, y del Porsche que está atrás del Dic, y este ya quité la, la madera que va alrededor y este, y ahí ya no, no voy a tener nada que poner ahí. De eso no hay que preocuparse porque no voy a, yo no voy a necesitar nada de eso ahí. Y yo quiero, si es posible, pedirles a, con mucho respeto a ustedes, si es posible, seguir teniendo la escalera. ¿Cuántos años tiene ahí? No sé, cuando yo compré ya estaba ahí esta escalera. Y no creo que, que mi hijo o yo vayamos a dar problemas a los vecinos ya que diario trabajamos. Y yo quisiera permiso, si es posible, por favor, para tenerla.
I have one, more than one year living here and have never had problems with neighbors. And I, I'd like, I'd like to mention, like I mentioned before, that the cars are usually stored in the garage and on the driveway. I've taken the deck off so that there is nothing stored up there and I do not intend or plan to store anything up there. Being that the stairs were there before I bought the house, I would like to ask for permission to allow for a permit for these stairs. And I believe that my son and myself won't cause any problems, we are at work daily.
Y del cuarto que está en el garage, yo quiero la puerta en el garage por un lado para salir al patio de atrás, para no pasar por la sala con, con máquinas para, para hacer la yarda. O tener que abrir toda la puerta del garage y salir por enfrente y dar vuelta, y toda la vuelta a la casa. Ya que todo lo, lo que estoy pidiendo es, es conforme a la ley y todo es legal. Y de la, y de la puerta de al lado, no creo que, que ella, que ella, que haya problemas ya que mi, ya que mi vecino tiene una puerta enfrente a mí. Y, y otra, otra en su garage y otra para, para atrás. Es, y es legal. Y por mí no hay problema. Y yo les pido con mucho respeto a ustedes, den, denme el permiso para arreglar mi casa y muchas gracias.
In regards to the garage, I would like to place the door on the side. This would enable me to go out to the patio when needed, for example, to take out the lawnmower when I'm to do my, my grass area. Also, this would allow for me not to have to open the large garage door. In addition, this door, to my understanding, is legal for me to add. Also, in regards to encountering any problems by having this side door to the garage, I don't believe that there should be any problems. I'm aware my neighbor has a side door to his garage, one that faces my property and two other doors where he goes out through. With all respect, I'm only asking to please allow for me to legally remodel the interior of my house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Commissioner, any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Brown?
I do. The, the picture that we have, I guess this is the staff report, this was presented to us. I, it's a question about the cars and where you park them. Is your, do you park your cars in your garage?
En el retrato que tiene de la casa, se pregunta bien haciendo en dónde parquean los vehículos. Los, los, este, los, tantos carros adentro y dos afuera, pero a veces cuando vas a sacar un carro del garage, a veces mueve uno el carro y por eso es que se miraba afuera. Pero siempre están arriba.
Normally, he stores two vehicles in the garage and two on the drive, driveway. When he is, say for example, exiting out of the garage, he moves the vehicle from the driveway and parks it to the side while he exits. But normally, he stores on the driveway and the garage.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the time that the appellate has a right to, to a rebuttal. Do you have any comments? Pardon? I'll get to that, oh yeah, yeah.
Again, it's, it's in regards to the, that house used to have the garage where you could exit through the path before they did this illegal installation. So there was more exits than, that were needed, that were not needed. So because of all this new conversion, what they want to do, that's what's causing the problems. If there's only, what do you say, a husband and a wife, a daughter, a son and his daughter, that's four bedrooms. Why do you want five bedrooms? One in the garage, and that garage, that room down in the garage is huge. If you measure the width of the, of the front where the two-car garage is, that's a big garage. So whatever this, whatever the law requires or the code for a two-car garage, that's a pretty big room down there. I don't know why they didn't move their, their bedroom over more to the right and put the door where it would exit underneath the staircase. Because there is a garage door right there right now until they did the illegal conversion. So every, and as far as the parking, it's, I showed the picture, that car was there overnight. So it was there Saturday evening from eight o'clock to about nine or 10 o'clock in the morning. So that car was parked like that overnight. Again, it's, it's just the privacy. If they were to remove the staircase, remove the upstairs door and not put that door on the side, as far as the neighbors and I were concerned, they were mostly concerned about the upstairs doors railing. They were happy with that. Whatever they want to do inside their house is fine. I am here because of that side and because I have had issues with the son. He, he's even gone over and turned my water up to my meter.
Okay, that's not helpful, too, thanks, anyway. I, I do have two public, two speakers that wish to speak. Peggy Dunford?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I live across the street in Kitty Corner from the Ramirez. I've lived in my house since 1986. I've seen many, many people live in the house that they now live in. And like Mr. Perez says, we have had some bad neighbors, but that's, you all get bad neighbors from time to time. And this family has come in now, has been very, very nice. As far as the parking on the street, we live on a, a street where everybody parks on the street. A lot of the houses, the garages are not garages anymore, people have converted them into another living quarters. So I have there, and I've never really even seen them on the street parking, so...
Two visits and I didn't see?
No, there's, no, I have not either, so I'm not sure where that's from. But I just wanted to be here to lend my support. Since I have lived there since 86, I have seen many neighbors come and go and we've never had any problem with them. They're very friendly people. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have a speaker up, but it says Paul Ramirez, is that junior? I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my name is Robert Ramirez Jr. and I'm the son of Robert Ramirez and, and I was...
There you go, thanks.
And...
Get you on TV that way.
And regarding about the parking lots, we, we only have two cars, we always had them inside. The reason that, what Arturo was saying about that, sometimes when I wash my cars, I put them on the side of the driveway and I, I pull like the, the purple car on the side so I could wash them and all that. But other than that, we never had any problems with, with the parking lot. And what he was saying, I mean, we usually work and, and always stay on our property, you know, our own thing, we never like trying to bother like other neighbors and, and you know, and we always try to stick to us. And I, when we find out that I bought the back, I usually went to my neighbor which is on the side, the front, and the back of me. And they never, they told me they didn't have any problem, that it was my property that I could do, you know, well, we can, you know, whatever it was, you know, we had a chance, it was our property. So we told them, are there's any problem or anything that, you know, if, about the back, they're like, oh no, we don't even bother. We talked to all my back neighbors and they said, no problem, you know. And I don't know what he's now saying about the, trying to turn off their water, he's just, I don't know what he's saying, I don't know what I gotta do with this, is that, there was one time that when we got the house, he left the water on for like more than two days straight and my backyard was flooded. It was going to my, to my, my, who knows, the inside of the house. And I, I went nicely, knocked the door and no one answered me and it was already going inside the house, it was flooded, all the whole water. So I tried to call the number where, because he has a towing truck and I tried to call it, no one answered me. And I, and I, I guess, the guy, Arturo came and, and his daughter was there, but she didn't answer me. And I was kind of, you know, that was, I didn't try to go and turn it off, like I didn't went inside their property or none of that. We just, we just trying to solve our problem and, and you know, just, just, we got a problem which we wanted to solve it, we don't try to be no more problem and, you know, and, and that's about it, I guess.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ramirez, did you have any further things to say? Thank you. All right, having no other public comment, I'll close the hearing at this point and come back for questions and deliberations. Commissioner Valencia, this is a fourth district item. How do you wish to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a small comment and then I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners. I went on two occasions and each time, I was surprised that I, I saw, here's a house that's been added to and had some cars in, parked in their driveway, but no cars were ever parked on the outside of the street. And I was surprised, all, all the way down, I thought, my gosh, you think you'd park out on the street and save your space there? But no, they were, the cars were in the garage and parked just as he indicated, on the pad. Also, the, all the area, all the houses there looked very nice. There was one house when I drove into the, on Stansberry on the left that had a motor home and another one had concreted all his front yard and put a, a trailer out in front, you know, so I thought, the property was a little eclectic. But as I drove down, all the properties seemed very nice and very neat and I just impressed with the way they kept their property. And with that, before I get ready to make a motion, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Brown?
I just want to make sure I understand this from staff, is that the stairs are permitted, but they need to be validated?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the stairs were built without permits.
Correct.
So the land use permit would validate those stairs.
Okay, okay, I got that, okay.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Blau. I think the idea that this was once, by a prior owner, it sounded like it, there were, it changed from a single-family home to almost three units illegally. And I applaud the new owners, the Ramirez's, to trying to get everything back, you know, into, under compliance and into, under conformity. I was very impressed when I was reading the original staff report that we had, that the Ramirez's were willing to remove those stairs. And it seems now that that has been taken out. Gee, I think as far as, you know, good neighbor policy, it'd be, maybe wonderful, you know, if the Ramirez's would consider that. I just can't imagine what that staircase, why it's, it's necessary if you have the, you have access to their upstairs room inside the house, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, the second floor is accessed by a spiral stair in a corner of the living room. So that if the stairs at the back of the house were removed, the fire department would require a remodel of the stairs on the inside of the house, so they would have proper access as of their requirements.
Okay, so the spiral staircase, that's not permitted?
The spiral staircase is permitted as long as there is another, another entrance to the second floor that the, for instance, the paramedics could get a stretcher up. But if those rear stairs were removed, then the spiral staircase would have to be replaced with a normal one.
Commissioner Brown?
I'm sorry, was Commissioner Brooks through?
Our lights off, our lights off.
Okay. So it could be the case then, that with the exterior stairs in the rear, they could do away with any interior stairs to the second floor? No, they still have to have, they... No, they still have to have, they, okay, so it's the, okay, I get it, all right. Okay. It's just the kind of stairs in the interior.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, um, they need to maintain interior access to the second floor, but, um, it doesn't have to be access capable of, of fire department use.
I get it.
And just a side comment from me. Um, if this were a commercial building of four thousand square feet or more, you'd be required two accesses to the, to the second floor, just for fire. It's not unreasonable to have a, an access to the outside of the house from the second story. In fact, from a standpoint of safety, it's probably the most desirable, to tell you the truth. Anyway, Commissioner Brooks, you have other comment or question?
Um, the only other one that I had, uh, looked at, uh, there's, uh, there's going to be a wet bar. So right now, up in the upstairs room, that's actually a, a full studio unit with, uh, functioning kitchenette, and that's going to be changed, then, to have a, just a bedroom with a wet bar, so you're keeping the access to the wa, the water source.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, that is correct. The upstairs was illegally converted into almost a second unit, which technically is allowable in this zone district. However, the applicants chose to not have a complete separate second unit, and a permit for that. So they will be removing the cooking facilities and replacing it with an allowable wet bar area, which has restrictions on, for instance, the length of the counter and the size of the sink.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, you have a question?
Uh, no, I just have some comment, are we in?
Great.
Okay. You know, I, um, I live in an urban area where I've seen everything happen to single-family homes, and here is a case that was a single-family home that became a triplex, in my opinion. Uh, a new owner came in and has done the right thing, or is trying to do the right thing. Um, my concern is that with this exterior stairs existing, is that the neighbor, uh, the appellant loses his privacy. Um, you know, I, in the second district, where we have these kinds of changes, it goes through design review, just to ensure that we don't have a loss of privacy. Because now what it becomes, it's this neighbor's, it's Mr. Ramirez's benefit, and it's Mr. Perez's detriment, that, where he's got neighbors coming and going. And what this does, it allows the, basically, the conversion of this upper bedroom into another unit, into a separate unit, it can be a rental, having a wet bar, they can put a microwave. I know what goes on in these, in these houses. So I'm, I just think it's a, a real shame that the county allows, that permits this, because this takes it from a single-family home into something totally different, and then it just, it snowballs from there. I've, you know, I see what goes on in these neighborhoods, garage, illegal garage conversions, and so on, so forth. And I'm not saying that that's happened here, but, um, obviously did with the previous owner. So I am not in favor of, uh, keeping the exterior stairs. Um, it's very seldom that you see single-family homes with exterior stairs, they're always in the interior. You know, when I see them in Golita, what's happened is, the ex, units with the exterior stairs have been converted into rental units illegally, and there are many in Golita, uh, unfortunately. So I'm not, um, I'm in favor of, well, now that this is slightly changed, with, um, the, with the maintenance of the stairs, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that, and I would be in favor of upholding the appeal for a removal of the exterior stairs.
Mr. Cooney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I believe, um, in the rule of law, uh, however, I, I think in this case, what we have is, uh, the superseding rule of consideration for one's neighbors, and, uh, from the testimony I've heard today, and also, we received a letter, um, two other letters of support for the Ramirez family. Uh, they at least intend to honor, uh, that, uh, superseding rule, to the point where their neighbors will benefit from their presence, rather than, um, than suffer a detriment. And to me, that's the most important thing. I, I agree that, uh, the stage is set for a, uh, a violation of privacy rights, if not legal rights, of the neighbors. Uh, there could be a second unit conversion, uh, they could have a party on the deck. Uh, there are lots of things that could happen, but frankly, I don't think the planning commission's in the position to stop that. I think it comes down to, uh, respecting your neighbors and, and their right to live in peace, and this is a peaceful neighborhood, by all accounts. Um, so I think in terms of our jurisdiction, we're limited to, uh, correcting the, uh, legal violations, and that is being done. I was, like Commissioner Brooks, I was pleased, uh, that the Ramirez's were willing to go even beyond, and remove the railing, and, uh, remove the exterior stairs, because that would, uh, do so much to alleviate the situation. However, uh, when I thought of the cost of removing the stairs, and, uh, adding interior stairs that would comply, uh, I realized that's a very substantial expense, um, for the, um, benefit of the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, and, uh, I'm not sure I would've made that concession if I was in the position of the Ramirez's, too. So, uh, on balance, Commissioner Valencia, I will be supporting staff's recommendations in this case, uh, and relying on the Ramirez's to continue their respect of their neighbors' privacy rights.
Commissioner Brooks, do you wish to weigh in?
All right, then I'll, I'll weigh in also. I agree with Commissioner Cooney. Um, the issue of privacy, uh, that's not from a public view shed, is not in our purview, and not a reason that we can, uh, we could make a finding to support the appellant. My suggestion is to maybe do some landscaping to block his view of your house, that's what I do in my case. I have a neighbor that has a kitchen window that looks right into my patio, my barbecue area, so, some nice plants, tall plants, and it's no longer a problem. Um, so I'm prepared to support the staff recommendation to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and like to thank my fellow commissioners for all their comments. I too have a similar situation. I had a house built in back of my house with a two-bedroom, and looking straight down into our bedroom, and into our living room, and into our kitchen, and I thought, my gosh, why did they do that? Well, they're nice people, but they want to use their property to their fullest, and I respect that. And so what I did in response is, I grew some tall trees to cover that, so that now I have the privacy that I need. And probably, that's probably what Mr. Perez needs to, uh, needs to do. I think Mr. Ramirez is trying to be a good neighbor. Uh, he's trying to comply with the laws of the county, and that's good. He, he, he's removing the kitchen, the side door in the garage, it's a necessity, uh, and I agree with him that it, it's silly to go and open the garage door on the front to take his lawnmower to go all the back, when he can go out the side door. We all do those things. The stairs, the stairs are a problem, but however, he didn't originally build the stairs, the previous person built the stairs. And so, uh, if, if the plan was coming before us, and we were, he was gonna build the stairs, we might have some recommendations for that. But at this point, it's a moot point for us. They're there, and, uh, they're legal, and there's nothing we can do. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion, that we adopt the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the sequo findings, and that we deny the appeal number oh-eight APL zero strength twenty-seven, and that we grant de novo approval of the revised land use permit number oh-eight LUP zero strength three twenty-one, based on the changes to the project description and contin, and conditions as contained in Attachment B, and any corrections made at this meeting.
And I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Chair, that would include the corrections indicated in the March tenth memo to your commission?
And I believe the, um, conditions are in Attachment C, but that's, uh, I, I know that was your intent.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? Ms. Hoplin, if you read the roll.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries three to two.
Great. Before we take our next item up, I'm going to, uh, we want to continue the item for the solar energy systems permit requirements, but before I make the motion to do the continuance, we do have one public speaker, Mr. Barry Scholl. Mr. Chair, could we have a two-minute recess? Sure. Well, a two-minute recess. Thank you. Okay. (music) Getting up here, we do have one letter that came in on the press appeal, that came in, uh, it looked like today, and although it's a two-page letter, it's handwritten with rather large, and I think if they'd have typed it, it would be a single page, so I'm going to propose that we, uh, allow it to be in the record. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any comment? Ms. Hoplin?
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries five-zero.
Great, thank you. Now we'll take up the issue of the, uh, continuance for the solar issue. And I thought I had a speaker slip, but actually, he's to talk about the appeal process and the noticing, so, um, I have no public comment, so I'll now entertain a motion to continue it.
I'll make a motion to continue, to continue that to April eighth. I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Hoplin?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask, um, Ms. Hoplin to read that into the record, and then take your vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department, that the county planning commissioner, consider, commission consider and adopt a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that they adopt an ordinance, case number zero-nine O R D one, amending Article thirty-five point three, Site Planning and Other Project Standards of Section thirty-five dash one, the Santa Barbara County Land Use and Development Code of Chapter thirty-five, zoning of the county code as set forth in Attachment C, that would revise the existing procedures for permitting freestanding solar energy systems, to allow such systems to be allowed with zoning clearance instead of the current land use permit, when they comply with a set of development standards designed to address capability with the surrounding area.
Thank you. And although I see no other speakers in Santa Maria, there could be in Santa Barbara, so I'll ask for any other public comment. Not hearing any. Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Cooney?
Um, yes, Commissioner Blau, um, I just think it would be helpful, uh, we've continued this a couple of times, and I've had, uh, discussions with County Council, Ms. Van Muller, about the issue, and I, I just think it would be beneficial for everyone to understand what we're concerned about from a legal standpoint.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Van Muller?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Yes, uh, the reason it was continued last week is so that I would have additional time to look at the issue. I am concerned about, um, our preemption by the state, and our ability to regulate solar energy systems, and so it's being continued so that we can, um, come back with a revised, a revised ordinance that I feel fits within that structure.
And, uh, just a question for me, are you comfortable with April eighth? This is something I don't, this is what I think we have to rush into.
I, I am comfortable with April eighth. I think that the revisions are going to be, um, pretty simple, because we don't have very much that we can regulate. The statute's pretty specific that we are limited to regulating health and safety issues with regards to solar energy systems, so I actually think that the revisions will be quite simple.
Thank you.
But if the commission would prefer additional time, then that's...
Just make sure you have enough time.
Thank you.
Great. Any further questions or comments from the commission? Not seeing any lights. Ms. Hoplin?
Who, who made the motion and seconded it?
I did.
Actually, I, I made the motion, actually, but...
Okay, Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries five-zero.
Thank you. And now if you'll read the last item into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The county planning commission will participate in a workshop to review and give direction to the planning and development department on proposed revisions to the public noticing procedures and requirements.
And we have a staff report.
Mr. Chair, um, Ms. Saly will give the staff report today, but I just wanted to provide a, a little bit of, of, um, perspective on this, particularly for Commissioner Brooks, who's not as familiar with our process improvement efforts. So we've been working, um, on improving our process, really in a very formal way, since, um, two thousand and three. And we did some changes several years ago to noticing, and what we're really doing is building on those and learning from those, um, changes that we made. So, um, we're really, uh, stressing, uh, early input into our process, and so most of our changes are geared toward, uh, providing notices more effectively and earlier in the process, so that people become involved in the process at a point where, um, plans can still be changed and, and adjusted, um, based upon concerns of, of, uh, affected parties. So, uh, Ms. Saly will run through the changes that we're proposing. This is just a workshop. We will come back to the commission. We're hoping we will be back in May with the actual ordinance language, and we really want to get this, um, set of amendments processed and, and underway. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Saly.
Thank you.
Um, Chair Blau, I just, for the record, I did, um, actually become a, an active member of this, uh, pit, uh, for just a couple of months, and I did attend, uh, the one, one meeting when this was, uh, being presented as a member of the public, interested member of the public. So I have some knowledge of, of the background, but thank you for providing that.
Please continue.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, what we'd like to talk about today is, first and foremost, improving the posted notices, and unfortunately, we neglected to bring the, the yellow sign that the city uses, although we do have a slide of it for you. Um, but that's one of the main things we'd like to talk about, and we are thinking in terms of a one-year pilot program to test those signs, see how effective they are, uh, and make changes as appropriate. Right now, we're proposing that that pilot program be done in the Montecito area. Uh, part of that being, it's a discreet area, we, it needs to be something that anyone can say, okay, if you're going to have a pilot program, the area is X or X and Y, and that is easy for everyone to define, there's no murkiness there. Um, we are also proposing to standardize some of the land use permit and coastal development permit requirements. Wherever we can, we'd like to standardize, again, keep confusion to a minimum. Um, number four, improving, or excuse me, providing notice of initial concept review by regional, um, boards of architecture review. Right now, many projects get noticed, but the ones that do get noticed are, they are accompanied by another application that requires notice. About five percent of the projects do not get noticed, so we'd like to talk about that. And we'd also like to talk about providing notice for discretionary projects sooner in the process. Um, Ms. Black just ran through some of the background. We have been working for several years on these issues. Um, three years ago, we changed the land use permit noticing to require mailed notices. That seems, by most anyone's measure, to be a success. Um, there's some tweaking that needs to go on, but we're, we are just building, we're trying to make things better. The theory being, you get people involved earlier, problems get solved sooner, you have better projects, and ideally, fewer appeals as well. Here's an example of what the land use permit notices look like. They should be reasonably visible from the street, near the street. We are not proposing any changes to the requirements in terms of when they're posted, it's the nature of the notice that we're now talking about changing.
That's the question. Who's, who's doing the posting? The applicant or the, uh, county?
Mr. Chairman, right now, the applicant posts the site, and right now, the applicant mails the land use permit notices. They signed an affidavit to that effect, and it, it works reasonably well, although we are proposing a change in that as well. We're proposing that staff take over the mailed noticing, but the applicant would retain the responsibility to notice the site.
And just a comment, um, based on our, some of the history of people that are complaining about the noticing, and, you know, it ends up on the north corner of the Hundred Dicker property, as opposed to the south corner. It seems to me, I, I'd be much happier that this, that it was a staff person that did the noticing, because they're more likely to put it in the most conspicuous spot, whereas the applicant is not likely to do that. I'll also, I'm glad to see that you're now doing the mailings. That was my other big comment in here. In most municipalities that I have dealt with, I provide them with the labels, and the stamps, and the, usually, the certified list from a title company. and the, usually the certified list from a title company, signed by some title officer that says, these are all the people within the 300 or 500 feet. And then you do the mailing. Because I think what happens is, is that, for example, we had, an example, I think at this last hearing, where someone brings in an envelope, and it doesn't say official business County of Santa Barbara, it's the name of their company. So you don't know if it's junk mail, or if it's something that's semi-official. I'll also tell you that in most municipalities, they get real cheap on the noticing. They're typically a piece of paper stapled in thirds. They put a stamp on there. It looks like junk mail, as opposed to something more formal, an envelope that's got the county seal on there, and it looks like it's something important that you need to open and read. So those are my two comments on the noticing. And I'll get to your signage when you get to that part, to have comments on that as well.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify, in response to your comment, the issue of the envelope that doesn't say County of Santa Barbara, we have as a stopgap interim measure. We have changed that. That's not happening anymore, even though the ordinance may need amending. But we're instructing applicants, white envelope, we're giving them Santa Barbara County Planning and Development return on address labels. So we've plugged that hole, but appreciate your comments.
I think Commissioner Blau has a comment at this point as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These signs are so that the public know what's going to happen, correct? So the public is authorized to enter on private property to read these signs?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Valencia, the signs are typically posted, and the language in the ordinance says adjacent to a public right-of-way. The picture that I showed you there was maybe 15 feet off the road, but the sign's something like this...
Somebody has it on their property. You, we would have to walk on their property to see the sign?
Right. You, it's usually if there's a fence, for example, it's just in front of the fence. I mean, it's on the half...
You know, I posted, when I was building a patio cover or something, I had to post a sign. And it was on the inside, and I, and they said, that's so the public can see it. They told me what it was. So the public had to come into my property to see it. I thought, well, I don't want people coming into my property without my permission, you know? And one lady didn't come in. So it creates a problem of some sort, just so we have some...
Ms. Black has a response.
Mr. Chair, I just, just a comment, really. The best we can do is to post it in an area, is to require posting in an area where it's visible to people. There are some properties where that's pretty difficult to do. And that's part of the reason why we're looking at this pilot program, where at least if you saw this sign, which will be more visible than an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet of paper, you could find out about it, even though you may not want to walk onto somebody's property. And we're going to, at the retreat, hopefully, have a demonstration on a, an upgraded Acela tool that the commission and others can use to access information about properties and projects. It's much better than the ZIP code system we have now. So I think the combination will be really helpful.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
I have a question. Is there criteria given to the applicant about posting of signs? Does it say, A, you got to do A, B, C, and D, so that the applicant walks away and knows exactly where the signs have to be posted, or what, how they can be posted?
Mr. Chairman, applicants are given instructions on posting. And in my experience, most of them do a very good job of this, because if someone stands up at a hearing, discretionary item, for example, and says, the notice wasn't there, or it was only there for a day, or whatever, it's misnoticed. You get, have a continuance, and applicants don't want that to happen. I mean, that works very well for hearing items. We would like to, I think, hear from other commissioners, Mr. Chairman, on your suggestion that staff post the site. That may involve an additional site visit. So there's pros and cons for that. But we'd like to hear, you know, when we get into comments. While I'm here, let me show you this subject parcel. One of the things we're proposing is, when we instituted the mailing land use permit notices, we had two tiers of projects. The ones that were very simple, one-story, small additions. The noticing is just adjacent parcels. In this example here, you can sort of understand, it's pretty labor-intensive to figure out what constitutes adjacent, where you have curving roads. Whereas on the right, it's the same parcel, 300 feet. And we're proposing, let's just standardize at 300 feet, it's a faster process, simpler computer program to spit out those mailing labels. It just makes a lot of sense.
Since you're asking for input, I'll poll the commission right now on that single issue, so we can not come back and be belated here. I'm, for one, used to that. That's the way I, all the noticing I've ever had to do is 300-foot radiuses or 500 or whatever. So this commissioner says, yes, that's a great idea. The rest of you want to just jump in?
I have a question. Would projects that are, say, of a larger nature, end up just having an LUP for some, I'm thinking of a shopping center would be doing something? That would probably just not, they, if there were any changes, it would be some other kind of permit. I mean, they would have gone through the development, the development review process, they would have had all these other things in the land. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, LUPs are for simple and small projects, traditionally.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, yes. I mean, there are some exceptions to minor changes on discretionary projects, but those typically are accompanied by a substantial conformity determination, or amendment, or revision, which are noticed.
Okay, fine, thank you. Oh, well, let me ask you that. The, let's say it is a shopping center, and they're doing something in it, and it is a substantial conformity determination. The noticing for that is mailed, and it's at what, 1,000 feet?
Mr. Chair, most of our noticing is 300 feet. Commissioner Brown?
But even for a huge proj, let's say it could be Fairview Shopping Center, it's 300 feet. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was wondering where the reference point is. Do you find a center point here, or do you go from here 300, from here 300, from the outer edges 300? From the outer edges of each?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Valencia, yes. It's from the outside, the perimeter of the property.
All right, thank you.
While I have this slide up, one of the other changes we're proposing is, this is actually a through lot with frontage on two different sides. We are proposing in instances like that, notice be provided on both properties, or both right-of-ways. And that is something that applicants are advised at the counter, but they're not obligated to do. And we think that's just being a good neighbor again. And there are situations where the development may be proposed in, throughout the parcel, or in two different locations. So we believe that's prudent to do.
Mr. Cooney?
I have a question. This is more in the play-out of the rules. What happens to verify that the posting was done, or the mailing was done? How does the county reconcile the actual posting with facts, so that it is satisfied that correct noticing was accomplished?
Mr. Chair?
And as a follow-up question, is there any proposal before us to change that in any way?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, with respect to posted notice, we require that applicant sign an affidavit that they've posted properly. And by and large, that's been successful. We've been doing this for quite a long time. On the mailed notice for land use permits, at this point in time, the applicant mails those notices. We give them the actual labels, but they mail them, and they provide an affidavit that they've mailed. What we're proposing is that we will, staff will resume the mailing process. And so we'll have the actual certificate from the clerk's office on the mailed notices. So we'll maintain control over that.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Blau. For the mailing labels, you send them, you go to the assessor's records, I imagine. You send those to the owners. If the owner doesn't live in the home, let's say if it's a renter, are those notices then sent out to the mail, the address, but let's say, addressed to occupant, so that those people who live in those homes have, you know, get the information?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, we send them to the owner. So if the, and it's based upon the assessor's data. So if the owner is an owner occupant, it would typically go to the property in the neighborhood where the project is. If they're not an owner occupant, and they have their address somewhere else, it would go to their address. The way that we provide notice to people who are not owner occupants is through the posted notice.
There, continue.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, we've, notices for coastal development permits are very similar to land use permits, with the exception of, picking up on Commissioner Brooks' question, occupants within 100 feet are mailed notices. And typically, people just do a double set of labels and put occupant on them. So if you're in the coastal zone, you'd get two notices. And we're not proposing changes there, with the exception, again, of the posted notice in the coastal zone. You can go farther than the law requires. So we'll, after the pilot program, any areas in the coastal zone, we would write, we would go to the Coastal Commission with these changes. In terms of the Boards of Architecture Review, or BARs, right now, as I said earlier, a small percentage of the projects that go for initial concept review, the first concept review, they are not noticed. And this isn't the case in Montecito, but it is pretty much everywhere else. The reality is, most applicants submit for BAR and some other kind of approval. That approval requires notice. So yes, the initial BAR is usually noticed, but not all the time. And there have been a couple of projects that have gone to BAR for several concept reviews, which is kind of a different issue. And neighbors haven't known, and most people feel the process would have been better if they had. So the discussion at the Oversight Committee, and our recommendation to you, is that where notice would not be provided for the first concept review, that the notice should be provided. And mailed notice or posted notice is something we could discuss. Discretionary projects, we've talked about those previously. The interesting thing here, depending on the nature of the project, is if there is a negative declaration or environmental impact report, a notice is sent at that stage. But generally, a project's been in the process for quite a long time, and a lot of work has occurred, and design and, and a lot of information is available. But mailed notice to anyone within 300 feet would not occur till that stage in the process. If there, if the project's exempt from environmental review, it wouldn't occur till it goes to Planning Commission. That can be pretty late in the process. And what we talked about at the Oversight Committee is mailing notice. And we had discussion about posting versus mailing. But mailing notice, once an application is deemed complete for processing. So neighbors would know a conditional use permit, a development plan, a tentative map is in the offing, and they could get involved. And again, our theory being, the project's going to be better at the other end, and hopefully not appealed if people who are interested can be involved.
Mr. Brown?
Let me ask this question, since we're speaking about a discretionary application. And we're talking about, again, it goes back to my question about a large project. Most of them have occurred in the Montecito area, but there may be some, I'm thinking, what we've seen, the Orchid Marketplace was a large project. And noticing there would have only been till within neighbors of 300 feet. Has there ever been any consideration, or was there any discussion in PIT about expanding that noticing for these very large discretionary projects?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, not a lot of discussion. I mean, there've been a bit of discussion, but not a lot of discussion, and certainly not a conclusion that we should notice to a greater extent. We do, on larger projects, and projects that affect a larger community, like community plans, we do display ads in newspapers, and we try to reach out to a greater extent. But it's, it's hard to identify a large project in the ordinance.
Well, I think, was thinking, if you're thinking of a shopping center, for instance, where there'd be traffic impacts and other impacts like that. Okay.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, just to follow up, those don't tend to be the projects people don't know about. I know that everybody... It's the smaller projects that people tend not to know about.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just add one other thing to that. It did come up in our meetings, maybe places where there's larger lots, Montecito, for example, additional linear distance around the parcel might be appropriate. And the consensus was, let's try a more visible posted notice first, before we start, again, having, it's 300 feet here, and it's 500 there. And that's the kind of thing where mistakes get made. So let's try this first.
Well, just a question. What's the size of the note, what's the size of the posted notice going to be now?
Two feet by 18 inches.
So a typical for-sale sign would be...
Very close, yes.
To that.
Okay. If, let me just, if I may, Chair, again, going back to a large discretionary project, and they would be required to do a posted notice.
Yes.
A posted notice of two feet by 18 inches for a shopping center that's going to undergo major change, for example, is, is not sufficient. I've been communities where the sign is three feet by two feet, for these big, huge projects. I'm just wondering why that wasn't considered for these large discretionary projects.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, right now, it's eight-and-a-half by 11.
I know, I know.
You're looking at changes.
I know.
Okay.
That was going to be my only comment, too. I would, just recently was down in the desert, and in most of the desert cities down there, you see signs that are two feet by three feet. I will tell you, they're all the same. I mean, that was my other comment here, was that they're black on white, there's no color. It's got the logo for the city or the community that's there. And you know, when you drive through there, that there's something happening on that site. There's no question about it. You can be in your car, you know, a quarter mile away, and you know that there's some approval that's going to be occurring on that site. I'm a little concerned that 18 by 24 is not appropriate, to tell you the truth. I'm, that was my other comment, when you get the exercise. So if you had colored signs and this, then, no. Black on white, keep the cost down, make them standardized, make them all the same, except for the fill-in part that talks about. I think that that puts everybody knows there's something going on there, that they'll pay attention. But that's just a comment.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, with respect to the size of notices, I've got to say, that at the Oversight Committee, and when we met with a smaller group of representatives from Montecito, there was a lot of discussion about the aesthetics of signs. And this community is very concerned about signs. We don't have billboards, we don't encourage large signs. So I think the Oversight Committee felt like they were striking a balance in having a sign that's easily identifiable, like the City of Santa Barbara's signs. I mean, you see those yellow neon signs, and you know something's going on. And whether it's this big, or two by three, they're hard to miss as well. So it's, you know, it's really something we're looking for input from you on. And we can certainly discuss it. But that was sort of the counterbalance, was, yeah, we want to see them, but how much do we want to see them? And that came into play when we talked about how long they should be posted as well.
And just another comment, you might distinguish between commercial and residential, and that might be the issue. You're right, for the residential, the for-sale sign would be about the right size. But for a commercial project, like Commissioner Brown talked about, no, it probably should be two by four, or three by four, or something that's identifiable when you're traveling in your car at 30 miles an hour. So that might be the, the other issue. Mr. Cooney, you have a, you have a comment?
I have a comment on this issue, and I'm not sure, we're jumping around a lot, but that's okay.
It's a workshop.
Ms. Salley is adept at jumping with us. But in talking about the pilot program for Montecito, which is where the new signs are going to be tried, I have to say, on behalf of, of the Montecito community, that signs are generally opposed. Street signs, though required by law, are not allowed in the traditional sense that are existent throughout the rest of the county. The signs are wooden and subtle, and you can get lost in Montecito because there's... The signs are wooden and subtle, and you can get lost in Montecito because there's not a lot of signage. So I think the compromise that the test area will benefit from most is a sign that the community gets used to identifying with project development. I don't think it needs to blast as much as it needs to inform. And the people who are really concerned with these smaller projects are the immediate neighbors. Usually, it only takes one or two of the neighbors to notice what's going on, and the entire neighborhood knows about it by word of mouth. So I think what we're trying to do is address a specific problem. With regard to the large commercial projects that might be going on, I agree with Ms. Black's statement that, that those are well-known. The county does a good job of getting the environmental impact report or negative declaration circulated to the key people who are on the mailing list, the organizations that are formed, like in Montecito, the Montecito Association. So those aren't the subject of concern as far as noticing, in my experience. But with regard to residential noticing, the one where we do have some concern, I think the proposal is a compromise. I'm not sure if something distinctive, like a border around the typing, wouldn't be beneficial just to identify it as a, as an official notice. But in terms of size, it's, we're going to hear objections as it is.
The only comment I would make to that, Commissioner Cooney, is that recently, when we did the Orchids Key Site 30 and 3, we got a lot of complaints from the public that this, you know, they just found out about it through, three days before we had our meeting. So that would be the kind of commercial project that if you had the larger sign, people would know well in advance that there's an issue there, that it's being rezoned or something like that.
Just for clarification, those sites weren't posted at all. Because it was part of a community plan effort. So we did mailings and we did newspaper ads, but we did not post those sites, I don't believe.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if you'd have posted them at eight and a half by 11, I don't think it'd done any good at all. Talk about a big piece of bare dirt, I mean, that'd be my concern.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I realize that the trial is for Montecito. And what I think is interesting is that Montecito already has a well-established planning process, processes, both their Montecito Association, they have their own planning commission, their own MBA, they own BAR. I would like to see it expanded to the Second District. I have been an advocate for advanced noticing for, oh, I don't know, quite a while. When I was on PIT from the very beginning, I talked about this noticing issue. And while the pilot program isn't in Montecito, you've had many residents from Montecito participate in this, they've advocated for this, they've guided this, I really think it would be very important to test it in an urban area, which the Second District is. It's an urban suburban area, but I think it should be expanded to that area as well. The community has benefited by the improved noticing standards that the county has had, but it hasn't gone far enough. And I think Ms. Black knows that I've talked to her about this a long, long time ago. And I would really like to see this trial period also in that area. I don't know about the other areas of the county, but I think it'd be very important to try, because you're going to be trying in an area where they're already used to increased noticing and additional planning processes that other areas of the county don't get. And I think the Second District would benefit it by greatly, so I would like to see it added.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you, Chair Blau. I'm wondering if, I would like to see the signs bright. I want to see the signs clear as far as, you know, something very simple. And I know in my community, when we recently had some signage, if the public doesn't understand what to do when they see the signs, I'm hoping that, you know, when I look at all these proposals, I think they're wonderful. But along with any change that's made there, if the public isn't informed, you know, by way of some kind of workshops, ongoing workshops, we have the internet, we have so many vehicles to inform the public. And, you know, I know when I was part of my little advisory groups, I mean, we sometimes felt, oh dear, you know, at least we are always looking for those things. But when you have the general public, the neighbors walking by, and they don't know what those signs mean, if they see the county label. And that's why I, one of my closing comments will be, you know, regardless of, you know, how much is done, you know, as far as signage and everything else, there has to be some way to better inform, you know, just the general public when these things crop up in these small neighborhoods. And they just look at the signs and they go, oh, they don't know what to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Blau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You might look for the ugliest visible sign you've seen and use that color, and then you'd be sure that everybody would see it. The color that you have the most complaints on.
Please continue.
Mr. Chairman, this is an overview of the, the main issues where we're looking for feedback. We've already received some. The first one is the pilot program. The Montecito Planning Commission wholeheartedly supported the idea of doing it in Montecito. We'd like to hear from other commissioners. We've heard clearly from Commissioner Brown in terms of, would it be appropriate elsewhere? Again, we're trying to, as much as we can, keep it some definite clear area and...
One question, what was the, I mean, typically, you do pilot programs because you think you, or you're uncertain that you've made a mistake in how you've designed the program. So where do you think the mistakes might be in this that would require us to do a pilot program as opposed to just simply do it countywide tomorrow?
Mr. Chairman, the thought of the, or the thought process the Oversight Committee went through, actually, is, on the left, something reasonably aesthetically pleasing. I don't think anybody was too wild about some neon color, for example.
Gotcha.
Only up there for a short period of time. So it's not that we all just become immune to these signs, but like, oh, there's the sign, I better pay attention to it. Basic information, we didn't want to have them have too much information. Size, we've been discussing that. The idea with the one year and in a small area is, there's going to be a real learning curve if it's done countywide. And what we did, if you look at the right-hand side, these were all the areas we considered. And we had a lot of debate about this. Urban area only, we talked about that a lot. Some, Mr. Field, Bob Field, if he were here, he would tell you rural, it's important. People aren't walking their dogs along rural streets, they're driving at 35 or 45 miles an hour. We talked about that, too. Community plan areas, south coast, there's more interest on the south coast. And we wanted to see, this is a pretty big change from, you know, people learning about it, new requirements. We wanted to try it on a smaller scale and not countywide. And if it's a raging success, we can expand it. We can even, halfway through, if we decide it's a raging success, we can expand it. But we thought this was prudent, let's not go too far. Let's try it on a smaller scale.
Mr. Chair, having said that, we're looking for input from your commission. And so if this is something you want to do more broadly, or recommend that the Board adopt more broadly, we're happy to take that forward as well. If you want to just consider urban areas, urban, inter-rural, the whole county, it's, it's really up to your commission.
Just for me, I'll just weigh in and say, I'd rather see it go in the entire county now. I mean, I have enough problems sitting back trying to figure out, you know, what hearing process is for here and here and here, and it's the coast, and it's this. I mean, the reality is, if we're going to have a countywide policy, let's just have one. Seems to me it's a lot simpler to implement, to tell you the truth. And I don't want to sit here six months from now and have somebody come up here and tell me they did get noticed, and how come Montecito gets signs and we don't have signs for their neighbors? I just, I think that's just disaster waiting to happen. And I will tell you that the other issue I have is, yeah, 18 by 24 sign residential, that's fine. Urban areas where you've got large parcels, where you're driving, you know, you're not walking by or you're not driving at 25 miles an hour, I think the sign should be larger.
Did you mean rural?
Rural, excuse me, what I say, yeah, rural. And certainly for, for commercial developments. And typically, commercial developments are on vacant parcels of ground. A little 18 by 24 sign in the, in the middle of, we'll talk about the Orchid project, nothing. I mean, you know, it's, you're not going to see that. But if it's a larger size sign that I can see when I'm driving 50 miles an hour, you know, I know something's there. And you're right, they will get used to them. When they see them, they'll typically go to the website and find out about them. That's the easiest way to do it. So I, for my thing, I wouldn't have a pilot program, I would just simply make it a countywide program. I think it's just easier to do. Why have a learning curve where the staff has to do it a certain way in this area and a different way over here and a different way over here? It doesn't make sense to me. Commissioner Brown has a comment.
Chairman Blau, I applaud you and appreciate your sentiment on this issue, because I think noticing is one of the most important things for our community, whether it's north-south, urban-rural, and to confine it only to Montecito, which already has robust planning processes and where people already know, it's, it's a very tentative step that needs to be boldened and that needs to be expanded. So I would agree, I would support that. It's not as though we're taking a sign that's two, two inches by four inches and making it two feet by four feet. Signs are already posted. This is a very, very small step. I like sort of the very aesthetic tailored notice of this sign. I'm not sure why you chose brown instead of a county color, a blue or something.
That's red, actually.
Oh, is it? Sorry, okay. That's fine. I would agree with Commissioner Brooks' comment about, well, what, what do I do with this once I see it? I'm not sure, do I have to call? Is there someplace I can go? I'm not sure, I can't read what's on the bottom line. It's the internet, it's a website, I guess.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, our intention is to put both the planner contact information on this sign as well as the internet address. And this internet address is quite long, so we're going to have a shorter one, because nobody can write that down on the call.
You need to just, yeah, like countynotices.org or something.
And then I think we'll need to put something on our website that explains how to use this whole community access piece of the internet. I'm happy to do workshops. I have not found that to be a very successful way to get people who will encounter one of these notices once or twice in their life to come and talk to us. It's just, it's not that interesting to people, but maybe we can put something on GAT, GATV that lets people know how they can be involved. We can certainly put something on our website that indicates that there's this new tool. We'll, you know, train the Oversight Committee members, there are some public members there, so it'll infiltrate into the Montecito area and to some of the Galita groups and the North County groups. So I think there's ways to make people more aware.
Yeah, before we get to Commissioner Cooney, I'll make one more comment. Where it says case planner, about county contact. Case planner, I'm not sure to the public means as much as the contact person of the county, just a thought. Mr. Cooney?
I'm sorry, just, I just had two more, two more thoughts, I'm sorry. I am in support of making the commercial larger. I just think that's very important, so people can see that. And I guess the question I have on the BAR concept noticing, that, that would occur after the Board approves all of these, or is that, is that how that would work?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, what we're proposing is that we would do a mailed notice and posted notice of the initial BAR concept review where another application doesn't accompany it. And that would not happen until the Board actually adopts these in 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney.
The ordinances are effective.
Mr. Chair, I, I just want to observe, I, I share many, many of the sentiments of Commissioner Brown and have ever since she's been on the Commission. But I, I just don't want to go too far here. I, I do think that what we're addressing in the noticing is that segment of the community that is not otherwise active in the community. And it's not just Montecito. We have activist groups throughout the county. We've certainly heard from them in the North County recently in connection with the, the proposed rezoning hearings. And people are getting more informed and they are being more alert to development in their neighborhoods. What we're trying to do is improve the opportunity for people to participate in the process. And I don't think you can make a horse drink, the most you can do is get them to come up to the trough. So, you know, I, I've been in European towns where proposed development signs are 20 feet by 20 feet, and they're, they're very specific about what's being proposed. Everybody in town knows what's going on, but they're a blight on the community. They're, they're ugly and, and they change the character of what would otherwise be a several hundred years old town. So I, I don't like changing us to something that we want to be sure is seen by every person. We want the adequate minimum amount of information on there to trigger interest on the part of those who are interested. And I think the county, the proposal here is just fine. We don't have a problem with people not knowing about major developments because they're so thoroughly discussed at so many hearings. So I, I think we ought to target what the need is. It's for residential projects where land use permits are sought and where people don't find out until they see the contractors starting to frame the building.
I have one public speaker, I'm going to go ahead and take his public comment now. So Mr. Scholman, if you'd like to address this.
Are, is Pat, I've talked with Pat many times, she's been wonderful. And are you going to continue on? I'd be happy to sit here, and it sounds like you're resolving a lot of my concerns and my issues.
That's our job.
Well, you're doing it, since I appeared here last week. Again, rather than, you know, I don't know whether I have to sit here all day, but if you're going to continue on with Pat, I'd like to hear the rest of her presentation. She may be addressing, again, more of my concerns and would limit my taking of your time.
If you want to, if you, I'll, I'll let you reserve the rest of your time for her after her discussion is over with, that'd be great, thanks.
Thank you.
I thought she was near done, though, is that right? We were, we were summing up or not?
We're getting there, we're getting there.
Oh, I thought you got that part where you wanted our input.
Definitely want. Could I just point out one thing on the, the size of signs?
You could point out two things, if you like.
Okay, two. Communities, San Luis, for example, uses quite large, probably four by five, four by six signs. They tend, communities tend to use those for discretionary projects that are going to planning commissions. And you might think in those terms, because you could, a land use permit in a commercial district might be very common, and I don't think any of us want a huge sign for some minor, you know, an awning or something. So you might think in differentiating that way.
And we'll tell you, I agree with Commissioner Cooney, you don't want 20 by 20s, but 18 by 24, for me, on, for example, the Orchid project, no, it needs to be two feet by three feet. I don't want billboards, but I just want to make sure they're not lost in the weeds or lost in the vastness of the property. And so I'm not saying what size they should be, but I think that's a consideration. You can come back and figure that part out later and, you know, for me, anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to move on from the slide, if that's all right. Here we have just some data, regional BAR reviews, the three BARs. And just to be clear, it's not that 294 different projects got reviewed in this, in these 11 meetings, it's the number of agenda items. And especially South County, there were 12 that went for an initial concept review without some other application accompanying it. And those are the ones that we'd like to catch. And it's a small number, it's, we believe the cost, there is a minor administrative cost, but we think the benefit far outweighs that. And we'd like to hear from your commission on that now, or I can keep going?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown says yes.
That's a bad sign.
You know, typically, as a developer, I hate, you know, the extra expense of doing this, but in this particular case, I actually think it's a, it's a benefit development community, because if they find out there's opposition early in the game and there's a way to sit down and resolve it, you end up saving yourself a lot of money in redesigns. So, yeah, this is one where the earlier the notice, the better, so you can figure out if there are problems and if it can be solved before you get too much farther.
And, but what doesn't make sense about the current system is, if the applicant goes through the concept review and they say, you've got our, BAR's got our blessing, they go on to preliminary, and yet the public comes in there and it's too late. So really, doing this, as Commissioner Blau suggested, is really the more prudent thing, and it's the more practical thing. is really the more prudent thing and it's the more practical thing, too.
I mean, the reality is, most smart developers go out and poll the neighborhood before they ever contact the county. I mean, that's just wise. So if you help them with that issue, I don't see where they're going to object. And I think the cost is minuscule in comparison to what the cost to have plans done these days. Other comments? The commissioners, I don't see any, so continue. I think you got a consensus there.
Great. Thank you. So here are the items, again, that we're looking for comment. The scope of the pilot program, and we've heard some different opinions here, and we'd like to see if there isn't consensus. We are proposing the 18 by 24 signs be used for land use permits, coastal permits.
Let me stop you and just talk about, let's just, just poll that one issue. Commissioners, how do you feel about the fact it's Montecito only? Or should we just go ahead and make it for the entire county? Commissioner Cooney?
More notice the better.
Commissioner Brown, we know how you feel, so I don't have to ask that question. Commissioner Valencia? Commissioner Brooks?
Ditto, more notice the better, especially in the North County.
So I think we want to see it countywide, not just Montecito, and that's a given. Next question.
Land use permits, coastal permits. Everybody agree that's a good idea for the signs?
Yes.
Discretionary, we are proposing that for where there's environmental review, if there's a negative declaration and there's going to be a hearing or an environmental impact report, the notice would go up. We are proposing only mailed notice once the application is deemed complete. And we talked about mailed versus posted and would like to hear input. The reason for mailed is we don't want these notices to stay up so long that they become part of the scenery and people don't pay attention to them. They could be posted for some, like 10 days or some specified period of time. But again, we're trying to let the public know sooner rather than later, even though most applicants, as you say, talk to their neighbors. Not everybody does.
The timing on the review for the EIR, the NIGDEC, is 45 days. When do you?
It depends on the type of project. Is the state involved? Are there other agencies? 30 days to 45, and sometimes it goes longer if it's really a big one.
But the issue is for the public to be able to get comment. If we were to post them for only a 30-day period, that's, by my opinion, ample time for them to discover what's going on and to make a comment. Ms. Black, you have a comment?
Mr. Chair, yes. I would recommend if we're going to post at the environmental document phase, that once the environmental document is released and we're in the public comment period. Can you turn it off? The feedback in this room is really bad, so if there's more than one or two mics on, we kind of have trouble. Anyway, I got an email about that. What I would recommend is if there's an environmental document that we go ahead and we post it and we leave it up until the hearing. Because if we post and take it down and post and take it down, we're going to drive applicants crazy. So once it goes up, it should stay up. On ministerial projects, we're recommending that it go up when the mailed notice goes out because those tend to get through our process more quickly. Discretionary, I don't think we would want to post until we are at least at the point of releasing an environmental document. Otherwise, these things will be up for years on some projects. So I think that's a decent compromise. People will receive mailed notice in advance of the posted notice because they'll receive mailed notice when the application is determined to be complete. But the posted notice wouldn't occur until later.
Commissioner Brown?
And then, I just want to think through the long process of a discretionary project. If they get mailed notice when the application is complete, they'll get a mailed notice later.
Yes.
And then at some other point, there might be a posted notice way down the road. Can you just walk me through all the noticing that might occur?
So, Mr. Chair, let's just take a theoretical development plan project. So you have a development plan. The application comes into the county. We look at it and ultimately determine that application to be complete. Within 10 to 15 days of that determination, people within 300 feet of the site would receive a mailed notice. And then we're working on the application, doing what we do. And we prepare a negative declaration. We send that negative declaration out for a 21-day review period. We would post the site. People would receive a notice again. And then we would finalize the environmental document, prepare a staff report, come to your commission. People would receive another mailed notice. Meanwhile, the posted notice remains on the site. And that might be, you know, a three-month period where it's up. But right now, it's just adding one mailed notice. Because right now, we mail notice at the environmental document stage and we mail notice at the hearing stage, and we're required to by state.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Black, I just want to get clarification for my own information. On ministerial projects, do you post notices now? Because there is no appeal process, right? Once, if something is approved through the ministerial?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, we post notices and we mail notices for land use permits and coastal development permits, which are our typical staff-level permits for zoning clearances, which are used in following discretionary permits and in some very specific areas of Orket. And a few other instances, we do not mail notice. We don't post notice because they aren't appealable. And that's why we're pretty judicious about when we recommend that you apply a zoning clearance process. But for all other staff-issued permits, they're appealable to your commission and we do mail and post.
So do we have consensus on the commission? That's the proper posting periods? I think we do. So next question.
Mr. Chairman, at the bottom left on the screen, evaluate and return in one year with a report. As with any pilot program, we would want to evaluate it and make sure it's working. And the kinds of metrics we would use to evaluate. And it'll be hard to distinguish what exactly is, you know, benefit or burden associated with this. But we can look at the number of appeals that are filed in that one-year period. And it's, again, not conclusive, but indicative. We can get input from the case planners or county contact staff who, their phone numbers on that sign, and do they get more calls? Are people better informed? Does this help? Counterstaff, we anticipate, would have a lot of good input in terms of, I saw this bright sign with a red border and that sort of thing. And then we can also look at the number of hits, as it were, on the county website that you can check permit status. And we would anticipate that would go up. And we would have some short, easy-to-remember link to that. So people, if they are writing on their hand, they can remember that, or it's short.
Commissioner Cooney?
This is a no-brainer. Obviously, we want to evaluate the program and how you do it is up to you. We'll look for your report.
And for me, that's great if you want to do a report. For me, it's unnecessary. I'll know. I mean, if we stop getting the comments that I didn't know about the project until yesterday, I mean, if those comments go away, we know the program's a success.
Mr. Chair, they will never go away because people don't pay attention to these things. It's junk mail and so on, so that will always be, that shouldn't be a criteria.
I'm just telling you, I think it's, I think that, for me, would solve the problem. But I agree, it's a no-brainer. Now, how you report to us is not, we're not concerned about that.
This was obviously more important when we were talking about Montecito being a pilot. If we move forward and do this countywide, it's not our intention to, it's not our intention to make these ordinances temporary in time. We'll simply put them into effect. And if we need to make modifications as time goes on, we'll make modifications, as we do, from time to time.
I agree, but I do think I'd like to hear a report on how it's working.
I agree. I agree.
Next question.
Mr. Chairman, we're assuming everyone agrees that where there are through lots with two frontages. So we're not talking about a corner lot. We're talking about where two separate frontages, there should be a posted notice on each. And by the way, we did test in good old 409. Even if you use a Sharpie, you can erase it and reuse the sign. So it's not like it's one sign, one project, which is good. So we're assuming, number two, everyone's okay with that, the idea of?
Yes, with the caveat that I still would prefer that you figure out some way to have the county employee put the sign up. And just because I think it eliminates that problem. You know, you charge the developer for doing it, and the reality is, you're not much different in cost than what he's going to have to pay to put it up. But, you know, I'm not adamant about that. I just think it makes more sense.
Mr. Chair, I think we're going to get huge pushback on that because we charge over $150 an hour. So if you have to drive, you know, if you're stationed in the Santa Maria office and you've got to drive out and post a sign in Cuayama, it's not going to be well-received. It's just not going to be well-received.
Then I would say that you need to, you need to have a staff person that will write up exactly where the sign is supposed to be, both location, height, and I would go along with that. I just don't want to leave it to the discretion of the developer. I mean, you're right, most of them put it in a place that's conspicuous. But you know what? What we're trying to guard against is that, is that not so scrupulous person that's trying to somehow get something by everybody. That's what you need to prevent. And I realize that's a very rare case, but that's the ones that causes so much problem. Does my fellow commissioners agree? That if we have a criteria where you indicate a little plan and where they know exactly where it's supposed to go? Okay, great. So next question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three, land use permits, standardizing at 300 feet and having planning and development do all the mailed noticing. I believe everybody's okay with that one. Number four is the idea of noticing BAR concepts when notice is not already required. And we had talked about at a minimum mailed notice, posted notice. We're assuming the commission would also like to see that just for the period prior to the meeting because there isn't an appeal of a concept review. But again, to notify neighbors.
I'll just make one comment there. You know, it seems to me that there are some BAR concept hearings that are so preliminary in nature. And I can foresee and have been in the situation where you come in with nothing more than a bubble diagram and you're asking questions and you get feedback in the bar before you ever really start, and then you come back with a second conceptual review. My only concern is that, I wouldn't mind that being at the discretion of the person making the notice concept. I would certainly have staff encourage it to be noticed if they're very far along. But there are some meetings where they go in there to make a decision to not do the project. So why go through the expense of the delay in doing that if that's the case? That'd be my concern.
You know, Chair Blau, for residential projects, they don't come in with bubble diagrams. They come in with plans.
Not necessarily. I represented a lot of developers in cases like that where we come in and, you know, we haven't even bought the property yet. We're still thinking about buying.
Mr. Chair, I guess my recommendation on this one would be, based upon discussions I had with the BAR chairs, would be to go ahead and post the site for ministerial permits at the first concept review. You saw the numbers. They aren't very high. People don't come in with bubble diagrams. They just don't. That's what I heard overwhelmingly from the BAR chairs. In fact, they probably come in with more detail than the BARs would like rather than less. So, and for these projects, we don't actually have a planner assigned. That's the difficulty. So you don't really have anybody except the person who's doing BAR scheduling, which is, you know, a person like Jessica. And I don't think you want to entrust that kind of a decision at that level. So I think we should do it. For those BAR concept reviews where it's on a discretionary project, I just want to make it clear, we weren't proposing to post the site. On those discretionary projects, we're proposing to post the site at the environmental document phase forward, but we will mail notice.
Commissioner Cooney?
I would just comment, Mr. Chair, that the real benefit of noticing at the BAR concept stage is that many, many times I've seen neighbors who find out about a project early on are not really opposed to the project when they see the plans. And they'll get in there and they'll talk with their neighbors and their concerns are alleviated. And those are the ones we never see appeals on and they're resolved at that. People feel they have their day in court if they have the opportunity to be there and explain their concerns, and most often, they're heard. So I am in favor of early BAR noticing. If the BAR says, come back in two months, it's up to the people to notify themselves of the second hearing if they want to go.
I think you have consensus. Next question.
Mr. Chairman, the last question related to discretionary projects, the idea of mailing notice and not posting. I believe there was consensus there. The one last issue, we talked about the size of the signs and 18 inches by 24 for land use permits, CDPs, BAR. I don't know that we had clear direction or consensus on discretionary projects, whether something larger would be more appropriate. And you can defer to staff and let us talk to the Oversight Committee and banny that around, or if you'd like to give some other direction.
My understanding is we're going to own these signs. They're county signs.
Good question, Mr. Chairman. The signs, the one I showed you, like that one, for example, at 18 by 24 inches would cost $10. And we would just pass those costs through. If it were white and black, it would be eight. Every time you add a color, it's $2. So you start getting fancier. Or of course, if you get larger, it'll be more expensive. But the costs are not significant. If we got into?
What's the sign made of to get it for $10? I can't get $10.
It's plastic, but it reminds you of corrugated cardboard. It doesn't weigh anything, but it's plastic. I went to Benton Signs and got all the information. And it has two poles that stick in the ground. It's pretty basic, but it's effective.
For me, I'd like to see staff given the discretion on the size of the sign appropriate for the project's dislocation and bigger range. That'd be fine by me. If we're buying the signs and reselling them, I don't care. But you could get different size signs. I agree with Commissioner Cooney that we don't want, you know, 20 by 20s. But at the same token, I don't want an 18 by 24 that I can't read unless I stop and walk over to, on the property to get to it. I think the staff could use some discretion as to the size of the sign.
Well, I think it is an issue between residential and commercial, too.
Just use good judgment. I trust you to do that. Commissioner Valencia?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You know, when people run for office, they use these cardboards that have a little plastic thing with two irons, an iron that goes down in the ground. And I thought, those can't cost $10. Those are probably, what, a dollar, a dollar and a half each or something like that? So what is the life of this thing? Maybe 90 days? Those things last in the ground 90 days.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Valencia, based on one sign on Mitchell Terrain, the life seems to be several years. They last much longer than the political.
90 days or whatever. Yes, yes.
They're more durable.
Yeah, and, you know, $10 for a sign, I would.
It's minor.
That was your last question?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the next steps, we have been to the Montecito Planning Commission. Your discussion today, we will draft the necessary ordinances. We'll use the Oversight Committee as the sounding board on some of these things. We'll return to the two commissions with our recommendations and with ordinance language, go to the board. And we anticipate being at the board in May or June, but definitely this fiscal year. Thank you.
Any further questions? I believe our meeting is done. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. He did leave? Yes, he did leave. No, here he is. I'm sorry. Almost lost your turn to talk. We just about turned the meeting over. Mr. Schulman, do you have some comments now to make?
Yes, I certainly do. Thank you. Again, I'd like to condemn, commend. We can start with, I'd like to condemn some of the things the staff has done. And I'd like to commend what the commission is doing and what Pat Salee and her group are doing. I agree with everything that you discussed today. I think it's terrific. You're addressing these issues in detail and appropriately. I just have some specific issues that I experienced with the Neighbor Solar Panel regarding permitting and notice that I would like to point out to you so that hopefully others won't have to go through what I have gone through. There are issues that didn't come up today. We concerned ourselves with the mailing and the notices. That's terrific. No more junk mail. terrific. No more junk mail, and the notices are going to come from the county. Of course, that doesn't help me because I got junk mail. And my situation is still the same. The posting of these notices at both ends are great, but it's, it's amazing the discretion in how you can circumvent some of these rules and regulations. In my situation, they did not post the notice on the Dominguez Road. I don't know if you remember.
We remember from your last, last discussion, yes.
The notice wasn't posted. I just learned the other day that there was a sliver of land between Dominguez Road and the Works property. In one instance, this morning, I met with Kim Probert. It's about one foot, 81 acres, and the property line does not reach to Dominguez Road, and there's one foot difference there. So, they decided they wouldn't have to post on Dominguez Road. I don't know whether that's clear. We had always...
I think we solved that problem by, the county's now going to be in charge of where the notices are going to be posted and how many are going to be done. So, you wouldn't have that situation in the future. The county's going to make sure that the people that are affected by the use or change or approval is going to have notice because we're going to decide where the sign goes and how many, and where they go. So, you wouldn't have that situation occur in the future.
Terrific. That, that's great, because, again, well, I won't go into ingress and egress, but...
We understand, we understand your concern. Your comments were well, well-taken last meeting.
Great. Couple of other comments. The appeal procedure, or lack thereof, we're talking about a 10-day period of appeal. And as I read the, the chapter notice, it, it specifically says mailed at least 10 days. In the notices that go out here, it refers to 10 calendar days. Somebody put the word "calendar" in, and it really changes the 10-day period. For example, there's no consideration for mail time during the 10-day. In my instance, the notice was approved on November 25th, and they tell me my deadline is December 5th. That's exactly 10 days. There's no consideration for a day or two of mailing. There was a weekend in there, and in my situation, there was the Thanksgiving holiday.
Since this is a workshop, I'm going to stop and ask the staff a question, because that, I must tell you, at other places, and I end up between a lot of different places, it is 10 business days. I'll also tell you that I've had several occasions where the city has taken the position that even though they got the notice of appeal late, maybe 11th, 12th, and 13th days, they still honor the appeal. So, I have two questions. One is, have we considered the issue of 10 working days? And does the county take the position that, given the fact that there's holidays, weekends, and so forth, that they allow an appeal past the deadlines?
Mr. Chair, the only, I'm going to answer your second question first. The only reason we pushed the appeal date past the 10 days is if the appeal day would fall on a weekend or a holiday, then it would be the next business day. So, for instance, your commission meets on Wednesdays. Your appeal period always falls on a Sunday. So, we automatically extend it to the, the next working day. If Memorial Day were the Monday, then it would be the Tuesday, but typically, it's on a Monday. We don't accept appeals that are filed late for any other reason, except that. As far as the 10 working days versus calendar days, we have always used calendar days. It doesn't mean we're precluded and can't do something different, but we have always used calendar days. We're hoping that the combination of mailed notices, mailed notices earlier in the process, this isn't an issue for most cases, because most cases, the notices mailed far in advance of the approval. Very, very simple cases like Mr., the, um, solar panels for Mr. Schulman's adjacent property owner was coincident, because they didn't require B A R review. But most of them, most cases you'll see are, are much more distant than that 10 days. But the combination of the mailed notice and a better posted notice, I think will at least alleviate...
Before I have Mr. Schulman continue, I'm just going to poll the commission here to find out how they feel about the issue of 10 working days versus 10 calendar days. Commissioner Cooney, your thoughts?
I'm nervous about going to any definition other than what is provided in the Code of Civil Procedure, because those have been litigated over many years, and we should apply the same rules, which Ms. Black has indicated the county does now.
That's good enough for me. Mr. Schulman, I think we're stuck on that issue. It's going to be 10 calendar days, although we could maybe have your focus groups discuss a slightly longer period of time. I'm, yeah, I'm not in favor of much longer, because I, it's kind of like, well, I'd be go 12 days or something like that. The problem is, is that too oftentimes, people use this as a lever to frustrate and thwart, you know, some applicant who's got a good cause. I mean, they'll wait till the last second, file the appeal, and it, because the date that it's filed, it's another month before they get to this, to the appeal process. So, although I sympathize with your thing, I think Mr. Cooney's, makes a very good point. He is the lawyer on here and does probably have more knowledge about that than we do. So, I'm going to ask you to take a look at the number of days, but we can't change it to working days. So, if you'll continue, thank you.
Okay. Again, I would just like to point out, if somebody's really clever, they could file that thing on a Thursday or Friday, and you're going to have two weekends during the 10-day period, which is going to limit it either, even further. But again, I'd like to address that your, your notice of public hearing in your own ordinances referred to 10 days, not 10 calendar days.
Mr. Schulman, if, if we were to interpret that, if a court were to say, "What does that mean?" They would interpret it in accordance with the statutes of the state. And what that means is 10 days in a row, weekend or whatever. It's just the last day. If that 10th day falls on a holiday or a weekend day, you get the first business day after that.
Okay. Well, again, thank you. I'd just like to point out, this really hamstrings the rights of a party to make an appeal when those timeframes are so limited. I also will note in here that in, in the appeal notice, it says, "Or for good cause was unable to do so." So, that does allow some opening on the 10-day period, "For good cause was unable to do so." And I tried to address that issue, that I thought I had some good cause. We learned about this thing going up when it was up. And we raised the issue of the junk mail. We didn't get adequate in mailing, which they've addressed now, and they've changed this. Evidently, immediately, they're changing now. They must have realized that this was not adequate and fair notice, and we're not going to do this anymore. So, I felt that that was good cause, not getting that. The two entrances, I thought that was good cause. It wasn't posted. I pointed out that in the actual notice, this morning, I was told by Kim Probert that he made a mistake. The provision is that they're supposed to, one notice posted at a location described below, he didn't describe it. He put a date in there, and she said that was an error. I think that's good cause in my situation to have this 10-day period. But I was told from the very beginning, days after we learned about it, "Go away, Mr. Schulman. Your appeal period has run." And every time I'd raise an issue for good cause, why we didn't respond, I got the same answer for a month and a half.
And I got, not to interrupt you, but there's nothing we can do at this point in time about your particular situation, except try and create new rules and, and that doesn't happen in the future. So, although I sympathize with you, and it's unfortunate that happened, nothing this commission can do about that. Not sure the county can do anything about it, other than understand what happened to you and make sure it doesn't happen to anybody else.
That's why I'm here, sir, to point out these things specifically, what happened to me, so they don't happen to other people. That's why I'm here.
Great.
I'm not specifically trying to correct my problem. I'm trying to deal with the problems of the citizens of Santa Barbara County that are going to have to deal with these matters. And these are very important property right matters, and that's why I'm bringing this up. So, I'm not asking for specific redress from you. I thought this was a workshop where you were looking for input as to what's wrong with some of the noticing procedures, and I'm trying to point these out. And if that's inappropriate, then I'm, I'm sorry.
The issue of, of the county denying you further time of relief way back then, we can't fix that part.
No, you're missing my point, sir. I'm raising the question of good cause. Who, in the sequence of events, determines what is good cause and what is not good cause? Could I ask that question?
Mr. Chair, maybe I can answer it. Typically, I go to county council, and I, and I ask them, and that is exactly what I did in this particular case, and went through the facts in detail with Ms. Van Mollum and, and Mr. Gazzoni. So, that's what I do. It doesn't come up very often.
Right. So, what we're trying to say is, we're trying to make sure that there is no good cause in the future. In other words, there's no mistakes that the staff would make that would create the problem that happened, that happened to you.
Yeah. Is good cause determined by the staff? That's my question. Is it determined by the staff that originally issued the permit, and then they determined whether they think there's good cause or not?
Mr. Chair, it's, it's not determined by the staff that issued the permit. It is determined at my level in consultation with county council. So, I didn't issue the permit. I review what the staff did, and then I consult with county council. So, that's what we do.
Okay. Maybe I just don't understand what your role is. I, you are not...
I'm almost the head of the department.
Okay, so...
Almost.
But it's basically, it's the legal, it's the legal staff that makes the determination.
Okay. So, all right. Well, I, I guess that's about it. So, thanks.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate your comments. They've been very helpful. Any further questions or comments of the commission?
I do. Chair Blau, thank you. And I appreciate Mr. Schulman coming and reminding us about and discussing the, the period. You know, if the post office goes to the system where they suspend one day of delivery, then it may be imperative that the county extend their, their 10-day noticing period to something a little bit longer, because mail won't necessarily be delivered on one day. So, that's just something in the future, if that happens, to think about.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes, thank you. Before we wrap up today, I, as we, I know what we're supposed to be dealing with today is just the noticing procedure, but I, I don't, is it inappropriate for me to keep coming back to, as part of the noticing procedure, as we look at the sign as it's developed now, could at the same time, could staff be developing some type of workshop that any one of your staff members could do, and that could be available to people online, or when you are walking down your street and see this sign, it's not a no-brader. It's very important. And again, as, I'm just wanting, with the noticing element, to put something available to the public so that maybe then you don't, your staff person on the phone doesn't have to spend, you know, hours explaining over and over and over again what the person needs to do. You just have it, and they can go to it, and that might help.
Mr. Chair, I think we can do some sort of public information piece. I think we need to, given the new tools that we're going to have available. I'm not sure it'll be a video, but it'll be something.
Yeah, something that somebody could access, you know, by way of the website.
On our website, yes.
Can you do that?
I don't know what they call it these days, but it, it may just be a, a public information piece that somebody need to read through or something like that. But sure, we, we'd be happy to do that.
Other comments? I see no lights. All right. I think we are done this time. Thank you all.